Mr. Collins?
We have Brett and Frank here. We want to talk about health insurance with respect to, does the county want to look at a fully insured policy or stay self-insured? I think Brett has got us some numbers to discuss.
I didn't know from my, I didn't know from experience, several years ago, we had one and we got out of it.
The self-insured?
Self-insured. And I'm not, I don't know what you've got, Brett, but I can tell you, I'm somewhat cynical on them.
Well, we've been self-insured the last two years. We were fully insured. So. I'll go through this one. I'll give you mine to Tim. Yeah. Angela, do you want to do that?
Okay, good. I hope so.
You didn't write just retired or what?
I did, well, yeah. Listen. So.
A little bit more, Brett, because I had to blow this out for me.
Believe me, I'm fighting printers, I'm fighting my eyes and everything. This is more just to give you a general idea of how the plan works today.
You're talking about self-insured plan?
Correct, correct. So, the plan's driven towards going in Memorial or Merit.
Brett, can you give your name and address?
Yeah. Sorry. It's Brett, last name's Bird, B Y R D.
Got an address?
Address?
You can do your work address.
One-two-nine-oh-nine thirteenth street, Gulfport, Mississippi, three-nine-five-zero-one, two, two, one. Okay. All right, thank you. So, the first page is just highlighting, it's, the way y'all's plan's set up is very unique. Nobody else that we work with has this type of plan. What it does is allows employees to go to Memorial Hospital or Merit Health Centers, and they have zero deductible. And it's just a copay plan, which at the point of service for the employee is a great deal. So their cost is way down, and it's keeping people premiums down, and the discounts are the best in that plan. What we're running into is we developed that tier-two plan, which is all under the same umbrella, and then you can go to Oyster, and you can go to Singing River, you can go anywhere you want to go.
Those cost more.
They do cost more. So, what we're proposing this year, instead of having one plan with three tiers, a tier-one, tier-two, and out of network, is moving to a dual-option plan, allowing the employees to say, hey, I will go with, I want to go with the Memorial/Merit plan and keep my point of service cost down, or I want the all-inclusive plan, and I can go anywhere I want to, but it's got a deductible, copays as it does today. But what that allows the county to do is spread some premium out amongst the employees and generate a little more coming back in. But it also allows us to know, hey, we can steer people into the best-cost service possible. And even if they are in that Plan One and they get referred out, it's going to be treated in network. So there's no danger to them to be able to not go somewhere if, for example, they have a certain condition and the doctor says, we can't take care of it here locally, we need to refer you to South Alabama, Tulane, wherever, then it's still going to be in-network for the employee. And then the TPA is negoti, does a good job of negotiating on the back end for those claims. So, with open enrollment coming up, that's really what we're trying to address now, is saying, look, we need to try to get some more dollars on our side with this. Claims are higher than they had been. We're going to come in a little under projected this year, but it's ticking up, and we need to, we're trying to get back down. We're still below Blue Cross levels when we were fully insured. We got alternate quotes. This year, we went to United Healthcare, it's on page two if you want to look at it. United Healthcare, Blue Cross, and Cigna, all came in over nine-and-a-half million. And right now, y'all are running about eight-point-one in claims and fixed costs.
Just curious, looking at the possibilities, if we would go with the insurance company, fully insured, I think, term you.
That's right.
What are the services that they, we would receive in reference to cost? Are they more? Would there be more? Would there be less cost?
No, you'd be paying about the same, but the difference in the self-funded arrangement and the fully insured, your self-funded, you know it's a fixed cost throughout the full year. So if they say it's nine-hundred thousand a premium a month to cover the whole group, you're going to pay that no matter what. In the self-funded arrangement, you do get rebates from the pharmacy, you do get reinsurance reimbursements for the bad claims.
But is the coverage the same, is what I'm asking?
The coverage you have now is a lot better.
That's my point, that I'm making. They can compete, but they cut back the coverage on you.
Correct. We can't get a deal that we have at Memorial/Merit, and the other thing I was going to add with option one, Singing River is now part of that high performance. So we're going to see a bigger discount and give the employees another hospital system that they can use, under that option one. But there's, you know, there's a lot of things. One thing, I don't want to try to drive premium up on employees and the plan they're in today. So by doing the two plans, we can spread it out and generate roughly seventy-five to another hundred thousand, depending on who goes to what plan. We don't know who's going to gravitate to the other plan, but we do know if more people stay in option one, the claims are going to stay down. So we're trying to incentivize them to stay into that option.
Can you do a rider where they choose option one, and then you have a type of rider contract that says, if you need to get cardiac surgery in Oyster, then they can step up and pay the difference in premium? Can we give them that option? Because if you lock into one...
You'd still, in that scenario...
They have to have an option.
Yeah, but in that scenario, like, you're basically saying, I don't like the cardiologist at Memorial, so I want to go to Oyster.
But remember, my son had open-heart surgery that was not able to be done here. Thank God I had great insurance.
Then it's still covered.
I had to go to Oyster, then it's still covered, even if I chose option one.
That's correct.
I'm not negated from the option.
That's correct.
Based on the doctor's recommendation, for example, the doctor says, I recommend you go to wherever you want to go, then it, they're still covered.
Oncology's been a big deal. So there's some, you know, some hospitals are struggling with oncologists, so they're saying, hey, we need you to go somewhere else. That's not going to harm the employee. We're not telling them, because Memorial or Merit or Singing River decides we don't want to do.
Well, they can't. There are a lot of services we don't have in Mississippi.
That's correct.
Pediatric, open-heart surgery is one of them.
Oh, yeah. And Blair Batson, Tulane, all those are, we can wrap them in as part of that option one for the best cost, but if the doctor says, hey, you need to go here, we're not going to stop them from going there. This is really more of your, where the plan gets hit the hardest, there's a lot of your outpatient procedures, your in-doctors' office surgeries, the, you know, and there are a lot of high-dollar claims. I mean, the population gets older, the claims get higher. You know, we can do Medicare seminars, but the thing is, the premiums are so low right now for the employee, they don't want to have to pay to get on Medicare while they're still working. So, we would never force them into doing that, but there are coverage options for them that may be even better than what you have in that arrangement. So, there's a lot of things we can do to educate the employees to get, kind of keep stabilizing the premiums and the claims.
The thirty dollars or whatever it is a month that the employee contributes to insurance, that's going into that fund, I presume?
It is.
And just curious, how much does that generate a year?
Right now, under the current arrangement, it generates with all the tiers, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand.
So approximately, not quite a million?
Not quite a million.
Of the eight million a year?
That's right.
Just a thing.
That's right. And honestly, if you go to a two-tier arrangement, we don't know how, again, I don't know how many people would say, I want to go to the all-inclusive plan and pay a little bit more, but we could generate anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred thousand more into that general claim fund by doing that. So between that, the discounts we can get at Singing River by bringing them onboard into the plan, and then just some prescription outreach programs, there's anywhere from four or five-hundred thousand savings that we can try to deploy throughout the year. But the biggest thing is, we're trying to direct employees into the most cost-effective place for the county's money and for their money at the same time.
Bet the discounts that Memorial Hospital has given us is the same, I presume, with other entities, for example, Gulfport?
Though...
The discounts are the same?
It is.
At one time, that wasn't happening.
Correct. And right now, the deal we've got with SAS and Memorial Hospital, that can be, that deal can be done across the board. However, we couldn't go to, I couldn't go to United Healthcare and say, hey, I want y'all to be the TPA on this and get those same discounts. So it's really, it's a lot of it's tied to the TPA and the hospital themselves.
Okay, what do you need from us?
Well, I think we've got dates set for open enrollment, and we're trying to, mainly, we just need to know, and I guess it's something we need to vote on at a different meeting, or...
Tim, can we take action?
Action.
Action, can we take action? Action, we should take action, since that's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
So...
You can either do that, or we're going to recess, go back, I mean, are we going into, after this meeting, going to...
No, I think we decided not to do that.
We're going to wait until they meet here.
So, the recommendation is to go to a dual-option health plan and keep the employee premiums on option one the way they are today. Option two premiums are illustrated on page two, I'm sorry, page three at the bottom right. You'll see where there's a difference of about twenty dollars a month, and depending on the tier it scales up. Employee children rate, we tried to keep relatively low because, and one thing we see a lot of plans starting to do is trying to impose spousal surcharges if your spouse has another option to get insurance somewhere else. That's hard to police, but if they want into that option two, they're going to have to pay more for their spouse.
And basically, what you're saying is that we will still cover them at the tier-one cost plan, right? And any difference, they would have to pick it up? Am I reading that right?
That's correct. The ultimate attachment factor to the number that we're going to use to generate the claims fund, that'll have to be voted on with the reinsurance renewal, which will be out in a couple of weeks, but that'll give us a number, we know the target for funding, but it, the good news, the more people that stay in option one, the better.
Better, yeah.
Right.
All right, Terry, we'll entertain a motion. Somebody's prepared to make.
I'll make a motion to state the dual option before open enrollment.
Second, any further discussion?
I would just like to say, you said you'd be happy to do seminars and stuff. Could we really get with IT, with Val or PIO, and sit you down and do a comprehensive video explaining what their options are?
Yeah.
What each thing means, if you have to go to Birmingham or New Orleans, this is, this is how it's going to work. And I'd like for all of our employees, if you don't mind, to see that, because I feel like so many people, even I am in the dark about what all of this means personally.
Yeah.
So I would really love, instead of doing twenty seminars and trying to get people, for y'all to commit to doing a comprehensive video that we let our employees sit down on their leisure to watch.
Yeah, so we've got, we do have that capability now with Gallagher, where we have the video series, so we'll have generic stuff, and then we'll have an example primarily for the option-one health.
And what, is the date of enrollment, open enrollment?
Starts on twenty-fifth.
First day starts October the twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
So we need to get this, them educated, like now.
We'll get, so the goal, usually, if we have time, that's why we want to have this meeting, is make sure they get all their packets, blue clips, and online material at least four or five days before we show up on-site.
Okay.
And then we have, I believe, five locations this year that we're going to, seven, and then we'll do the videos so they have another touch point as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep it simple, sure.
Yes.
The kiss. Yep.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Here not all in favor, send it by. Don't suppose by another motion carries. Thank you, Brett.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Brett, that's kind of do it so we can get the order right, because we were a little delayed. Send it to me so I can put it on the agenda.
I'll email it to you. With the three pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Information where you can get that.
I just need to be a little bit more specific about what the order was. I know what y'all did.
And blow off the print, so.
Yes. I'll do it, Tim. This should be emailed, we'll figure it out.
All right, we'll do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, if you have anything, anything you want to say? I'm sorry, we... Quite agree. I talked to Mr. Collins about, you know, yesterday, looked like it's going to be pretty dire as far as the hurricane is concerned. This morning, we woke up and I think it took as good a path as it could have taken, if it would have taken the path, I told Mr. Collins yesterday, property insurance would have been a big nightmare this morning, but this morning, I think we woke up and I don't think we're going to see a whole lot of change. I was, I was coming expecting the worst, but I think we're in good shape, so.
Good.
That's basically the only report I have. We will have initial numbers for the pool probably in December, so whenever, where I'm presenting y'all's individual program, we probably will have pretty good ideas of what the pool program will be, so you'll be able to compare. And this storm, whether it's good or bad, hadn't affected the pool at all. We're still working on details of the association, but we're working on marking the accounting at the same time. But I think yesterday, and I told Mr. Collins this, yesterday's a great example of why the pool would be to our benefit, because had the, had yesterday been really bad in the insurance market, our pool would have been big enough to sustain and protect us from a rate, huge rate increase or lack of capacity if we were all standalone. So, I do, after yesterday, I still believe the market's going to continue to soften after January one, so I think we're going to have good results next year regardless. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Creditors for jet streams.
Yes.
Third item on the agenda, Dr. Don Scruggs, urban planning, Scruggs. Is this some information we hadn't had previously, Mr. Collins?
Yes, that is the latest and greatest.
We haven't had a chance to look at.
Ladies and greatest for what, phase one, I guess we're calling it?
Looked like that's something...
We're going to take this up.
Right. Hey, my name's Don Scruggs.
Hold on just a minute.
Oh, sir.
Give me a chance to look at this.
Need a water before you start talking some more?
I think I've got some of it.
I emailed it to all y'all, but I printed it out, just so you can have a hard copy in front of me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My name's Don Scruggs, Ocean Springs, three hundred seventh Pine Drive. What I was going to offer you, Mr. Latner, is that this is, that we haven't looked at in the past, we're, I'm in the process of, I guess, getting it ready to go to the planning commission for adoption, but before we went to them for adoption, we wanted to give you one last look at it, to make sure you guys were on board. We didn't want to go down this rabbit hole of getting it through the planning commission, if there were issues that this board may, may see.
Does anyone have to go to the planning commission?
Pardon me?
I thought we changed the ordinance, that doesn't have to go, we decide then.
What we're talking about here is something that might require public, public hearings.
Most definitely, yes.
We're fixing to, what, fixing to happen, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're fixing to create new zoning districts.
Yes, sir.
And I think to do that, Tim, that's going to, that would require some public input, or public meetings, so.
Most definitely.
Several of the board supervisors acting on this.
Right.
And I wouldn't anyway, even if it weren't required. I think when you start changing the zoning, it potentially affects all the citizens, especially in non-incorporated areas, and I think we need that input.
Most definitely. I agree with you one-hundred percent. It does, it does require a, a planning commission decision, and what we're here for today is not for a decision. We don't expect anything other than maybe a head nod or a, or a handshake saying that we're not going the right path.
He needs our input. I hope that's all that's...
Right. Your input is very valuable. But I've met with Eric and Jackie on a number of occasions, I've met with a number of developers, and we really want to just ease into this because it is such a, a big change, and we don't, we want to weigh into it lightly and make sure we're, everybody's on the same page as we, as we do this. The, the crux of this change that we're looking at right now is the establishment of new districts. If you look at this chart right here, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are our existing districts. Basically, we have three districts, and it's a pretty, pretty wide choice. I mean, you go from a one district, as you said, fifteen acres, that's your E1, the next district has seventy, has three acres, which is your E1, and then your R1 is basically sixty-five-hundred or seven times a square feet being your smallest lots. That's the only changes, or only choices you have today when somebody comes in and asks for resulting change. So what, what we're wanting to do is to identify those, that we're calling established districts, those are the ones that are here right now, but as we come in, if people develop things in the future, they will be able to have a number of new districts, and that's the ones that are in, in plot that are underneath that. And I want to get into these a little more specifically. The A1, our, our goal really on this process is to not change any zoning in the county right now. Right now, we're wanting to adopt new districts, have these districts as options when a developer or somebody, or a citizen decides to change their boundaries on their lots or, or change their uses, and they need to come for a zoning change, then instead of going to the R, the existing R1, the existing A1, or E1, they would ask for one of these new districts.
So you've given, you've given the applicant, we're not changing the zoning map?
Correct.
What you're doing is giving the applicant more options once he requests a zoning change in a particular district.
Yeah, and what you have right now is somewhat, it, it does not work well for protecting lands, in my opinion. Let's say that right now, you've got a fifteen-acre tract that's a zone to A1. Dad dies, and the, the two brothers want to, you know, cut this in half, and one brother gets seven and a half, and the other brother gets seven and a half. Right now, to do that split, you would have to go in and resell it to a E1, because there is not an option for an A1 zone that's less than fifteen acres. So to split it and create two new districts, I mean, two new parcels, that requires a reselling to a, to a E1, which may not be consistent with the area that you're in, somewhere, you know, north of Soshia, where everybody has A1 lots, and it's very agricultural in nature, a lot of pasture land, all of a sudden, just to, just to split a piece of property, the two-seven acre tract, you've got to resell it E1, which means you've got to show a, show a change in neighborhood character that justifies smaller lot sizes, down to a three-acre lot size. So, this gives you options of saying, look, we're going to keep the agricultural topic or the agricultural district in place, even though we're going to have it as a A5 or a A3. So you're keeping that nomenclature in place, and you're not just changing it out and throwing in something different. So that's why I think the...
The allow...
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I...
No, that was your meeting.
But the allowable, for example, if you change that A1 district, fifteen acres, let's say, and use the example, we're going to, we're going to go to agriculture minor A5.
Yes.
Say that's three kids, that property's being, they want to do it. Is there any conditions under A1 that is allowed, that is not allowed under an A5, or is allowed under an A5?
That's true.
Does it change the conditions in the zone?
What I'm looking at is on your table of use charts, your, you know, your charts that you have, your zoning going that says what uses are allowed. The A1 that you have right now is basically going to allow everything that's, the A1 that's there right now allows the things that will be allowed at A15, A5, and A3. So your uses do not change.
All that's changing is the size.
That's correct.
Of the...
Yes, sir.
Of the zone.
Yes, sir.
The conditions remain?
The conditions remain. Yeah. And we've done the same thing with the, the E district as well. Right now, you have E3, A1, which is three acre lots. Now, this one, I think, is a little more important, because unlike the A district, you go to a three-acre or a five-acre lot size, you're still looking pretty big in nature. In the E district, if somebody has something that's less than three acres, say, one and a half acres, they then go, have to request a R zoning, a R1 zoning. At R1, we know R1 is, you know, from a very, very small sub-acre lot to a, to larger lots. I mean, you've got places in this county that are zone E1 that are two acres in size. You have lots that are two acres in size, zone E1. You also, I'm sorry, you have lots that are zoned two acres, that are zoned R1, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You've got two-acre lots zoned R1.
Oh, E1.
Is three acres or more.
All right, three acres or more.
Right.
I'm going.
Right. But let's say, you have a two-acre tract, and you zone it R1, well, if somebody wants to have the adjacent property at ten thousand square feet, a much smaller lot size, they can extend that R1 zoning because R1 sets a precedent. This is a change in input character. You've got R1 right here, judges oftentimes allow districts to be extended, so when you start doing R1s for two-and-a-half acre lots, but yet it's really not the character to be a suburban-type development, it does hurt you, I believe, in a, in a, if you go to court and somebody goes, I want a R1 zoning because I'm surrounded by three sides, you can't really say, yeah, but those are two-acre lots. The zoning is still the same. So it's very hard, I think it can be very hard for y'all to say, to turn down zoning changes for a R1 lot or R1 zoning when you have surrounding properties that are also zoned that way.
So what's the solution?
The solution is to give you, on the R lots, is to give you better diversity here, but also the solution on, on these lots is to give you more diversity on your, on your E's as well. Instead of having just a three-acre lot, you have an estate with three acres, and an estate with two acres, or a state with one acres, or even one at three-quarters acres. So you've got, you're not going down to the R1 classification.
You're staying in E1, and those are the guidelines of the size.
That's correct.
It cannot be less than that.
That's correct. If you, yeah.
That's fine, but what, what you're doing, if you're not careful, then what can happen, and I think the public needs to be aware of it. It's all, let's say you go from E1, three acres, and you approve an E, I can't, E1-32?
Yeah, thirty-two thousand.
E1-32, yes.
Which would be thirty-two thousand, or even less. Once that's approved, then if you, if you can, you're going to be able to build homes on, on those lots?
Yes, sir.
Those lot sizes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to make sure, that's...
Right.
But what restricts how many homes?
The, these are all one-acre lot, but two-acre lots, three-acre lots, thirty-two thousand square...
For example, on that thirty, if you do an E1-32, thirty-two thousand square feet, you're going to be able to put one home on thirty-two thousand square feet.
But it needs to say that, one home?
Yes, yes.
It just says that, one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, yeah, I mean, these are basically, you know, I mean, you, they may have an accessory cottage, or, you know, a structure, or, or a barn, or a shed, but there's only going to be one D, one dwelling unit per, per lot. But once again, in the E1, in the E districts, you can subdivide them. This is areas that say water and sewer may be available, but water and sewer, you know, may not be available. You can, you can do a three-acre tract, two-acre tract on land without public utilities. But this is much better, this gives you a much better option for zoning properties that are, you know, less urban, you know, further out, instead of going to an R1. Right now, if somebody wanted to develop one-acre tracts or two-acre tracts, they've got to ask for a R1 zoning. And then, the adjacent property owner could go, well, I want to do R1 zoning too.
Right.
And then, y'all have allowed this R1 in my neighborhood, so you should allow me this R1 as well. It, it sets a nasty precedent for you when you try to, when you try to put growth where it should be going, but the kinds of these larger lot sizes you have to choose from, you wouldn't, you wouldn't buy R1 districts in areas where they should not be.
I think, I think the elephant in the room, Scruggs and the board needs to understand, the elephant in the room is basically a dense, what, what happens density-wise. When we're sitting here with these subdivisions, that's where the problem comes in. When you approve or deal with subdivisions, you get density issues. And I've sat through appeals, and I think the last three appeals, where you've heard And I've sat through appeals and I think the last three appeals, where you've heard everything from flooding to roads, the conditions, this and that. But the real issue, when it comes down to the nitty gritty, is the density.
100%.
Well, that's it.
That's what this is all about.
That's what this is all about, is density. And what I want to do as a board member, and I don't know if the others can speak for themselves, but what I want to do is protect property owners that are sitting out there on five acre lots, three acre lots, 10 acres, 20 acres. And you've got this big piece of property out there of 100 acres or 200 acres or whatever it is. Developer comes in, he buys those, that lot. And the first thing they want to do is put as many homes on that property as they can, that's where their profit is. And that's the concern that we have. I don't want it, I don't want to create a, I don't want to create zoning districts that somehow get changed that allows without any public input, these developments coming in with these high density developments in these areas that are basically rural or semi-rural. And that's what I want to be careful about, that we don't do something with the zoning ordinance that basically removes the public's input or it happens without them knowing it. And then the next thing we know, we have people down here complaining because by right, this guy can put in these high density subdivisions. That's the elephant in the room, the density is the elephant in the room that we have to deal with and I'm concerned about.
And, and Mr. Almond and Eric and anybody else, you know, can tell you that there will be no zoning. First of all, you can't adopt these ordinance without a public hearing. And second of all, developers or anybody else cannot come in and, and change the zoning without a public hearing. The processes of a public hearing for a zone change will not change anyway. We, no matter what we do, they've got to come in. Now, there's a couple of things I want to address. You know, one is you said out of the area where you've got 100 acre tract of land and somebody wants to do a, a, a 15 acre or 20 acre or a, or a five acre tract, he said five acre tract. Right now, in this area that's predominantly or exclusively agriculturally zoned, to do a five acre tract with, with your ordinance right now, somebody has to walk in and go, I need an estate zoning, I need an E zoning, which is less than an A zoning. Your, an E zoning invites higher density than an A zoning. So by allowing that elephant, that camel to get his nose in the tin with the, with the, the E zoning, you've already now established a somewhat of a character that says this is no longer exclusively agricultural land, it's now some E land, some estate zoning land. And the same thing happens when you do the R1. So as, as you allow these different colors to pop up on your zoning map, developers can look at it and go, look, you've got a, you've got a R1 right here, you've got an E1 right here. You can't tell me I'm, that's not in character with the neighborhood because y'all already changed the map color.
So perhaps we should do more A1?
Well, maybe A1s, but-
It's the strongest protection, it is agricultural.
It, right, but, but-
Add more A1.
What's your problem with your As is that when you look at your agricultural zones that's out in the county, the majority of your parcels really don't meet the 15 acre requirement. There's a lot that do, but there's a lot of property that's out there that is 10 acres or five acres.
Or less.
Or less, right.
I, I think we've had some agricultural, definitely three acres and maybe even less.
Right.
Because, because the A1 zoning in the zoning laws, it was used as a holding-
That's exactly right.
A holding zone. So if, if there was no, if it was all agricultural around it and it was still smaller than the 15 acres, it was still used as an A1 zone because it was in a predominantly ag district when we adopted the map.
But, but if, if anybody splits up those properties and they are not 15 acres in size, they have to come in and get a rezoning?
Here's the, here's the key, I have an E1, three acre.
Okay.
Okay. And I want to split that three acre too, let's say, uh, E, let's say an E-
Um, let's go to that.
E, E.
You, you can do an E12, which is two acres or-
Let's do the, the most-
One, one.
Let's do E11, E132.
Okay.
There's notices are going to be sent out, I would assume, just like the same procedures we do. We'll send out notices that Leonard is an advocate and he wants to reduce his three acre lot, divide it up into E132, okay? My neighbors out there sitting there and they're probably not going to pay that much attention to it, okay? Especially my neighbors who have three acre parcels as well. But when I get ready to build two homes on that, my lot, they're gonna be, then they're gonna pay attention to it. All of a sudden, I'm fixing to build two homes. I would assume I can put two homes on a, a one acre lot if it's, if it's divided. Or would the lot have to be 32,000 square feet?
Lot would have to be 32,000 square feet.
Yeah, I can have two 32,000 square foot lots.
Yes sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna build two homes on it.
Correct.
Now my neighbors, now my neighbors are upset about it. Cause I'm, I'm really densifying, if that's the word.
Increasing density, yes.
I'm, I'm increasing density next to my neighbors. They didn't pay much attention to it when I just simply changed the zoning, but when I start building houses on those two lots, it's gonna affect them and then it's too late. They can't make an appeal, they can't go to the commission to make appeal, that it not allow me to build those two houses, nor can they come to the board of supervisors because now I have by right to put two houses on my two 32,000 square feet properties.
That's why if we establish entire areas as agriculture, then it solves that.
I just want to protect, what I'm trying to say, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but what I'm trying to say is, I don't want us to be able to change the zoning because people generally not going to pay attention to a zoning change. But they're gonna pay attention to what's going on that zoning change. And I don't want it to be too late because once you change that zoning by right, you can do whatever you want, I can put two homes on that 32,000, two 32,000 square feet parcels that I have now. And my neighbor who doesn't, who has a five acre lot over there or a three acre lot says, that's not, that's not compatible to the neighborhood. We sit, all of us are sitting on three acres or, or whatever and all of a sudden Leonard's putting two homes there. And, and if that's what the zoning law allows, they can complain all they want. To the commission, to the board of supervisors, they have that by right now. And I, I just want to protect people because it's easier to change zoning than it is to get a conditional use permit. As far as the public, as far as the public is, is concerned. I bet we can change just about any zoning with very little opposition unless they realize what that zoning is going to result in, that change is going to result in.
Mr. Leder, if, if changing zoning was easy, I, I probably would have to get a real job. I mean, I, I went before-
Follow what I'm saying.
Yeah, what is the solution to what you're saying? We don't want to increase density.
There's, there's-
Is that we don't want to, to increase the right to density-
Right, yeah.
Without people realizing what's happening.
Okay, fir- first of all, the battle or discussion should be on zoning, not conditional use. I mean, the zoning, if you had, if I believe you had zoning that was clear, people understood what it meant, then they would be more likely to come out and have opposition to that. Now, one thing I have included in these proposals, this, this page right here is 1407, which more or less identifies the, the size, the minimum size of areas you want to rezon. Right now, if you have, and, and this is, y'all, y'all do a good bit of this. If somebody wants to split a half acre lot or, or use, I think if you have to build, if you want to build a house on a one acre, on a one acre lot that is R, an R1, you've got to get it re, no, let me see. Y'all require rezonings to build a house on agricultural land. I don't believe you can build an agricultural lot that is non-compliant. So if somebody has a two acre lot that is exonerated agricultural, I know Mr. Vaughn would make you go through and get a rezoning for that property to build a, a house. What I'm proposing part of this is that you can't just come in and do a half acre lot or a two acre lot for a rezoning. That you have to have minimum area sizes for a rezoning, so that's not considered a spot zoning. And this page goes through, you know, a, a five acre minimum for some districts, three acre minimum for some districts and four acre minimums for some districts. This way, you're actually rezoning a good chunk of property and not doing a spot zoning for an individual property owner, which I think will get you, could get you in trouble.
Well, let me, maybe I'm missing something, but I own 20 acres, okay? And I've got neighbors who own five, 10, various relatively large acres. I guarantee you that I could probably apply for a zoning change in those 20 acres either into E1, E1, and maybe even smaller, I'm not sure. And the notice goes out that I'm, I'm applying to change the zoning. I don't have any proposals to do anything on that. I don't need necessarily, Eric, I understand, I can apply to change my zoning.
You have, you can, you have the right to apply for a change of zoning.
Without proposing any reason why.
It makes your case harder to make.
And they're not gonna grant it because you're, you're doing exactly what they try to prevent. They don't want you to change it.
Point is that I probably won't get the opposition. But if they find out I'm fixing to build two ha, uh, uh, houses on those smaller parcels, I might get some opposition. But point, that's the point that I'm trying to make. And that's why conditional uses to me is important because by conditional use, the public sees what you're going to do with that zoning change, okay? First, we, we, we had two, we generally had two issues come before our zoning appeal. Number one, the zoning change, which reduces the size of the lots or the zoning requirement. Secondly, a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit informs the public what the applicant is fixing to do with that property. And that's what these, that we need to be concerned about, that they know what's fixing to happen on that property and how it would affect them.
The only thing that-
And I don't want to make it easier to change the zoning and then later come back with a, what you call a plan. What was the plan and what's the technology, I'm sorry. What the applicant would do, the plan that he would do.
The sketch plan?
Sketch plan, I'm sorry, a sketch plan. But once he comes with, if, if the, once he comes with the sketch plan, the zoning's already changed, it's too late.
Okay, they're-
You've got to follow what I'm saying is, that's what I'm concerned about, that the public will not be as aware of it until it's too late.
But your planning commission, just quick to pick up on what Eric was talking about, your planning commission should not be granting the zoning change unless they know what your plan on doing. They're not gonna let you change-
Our planning commission, now since I've been here, and I'll guarantee you it didn't happen before I was here, is somebody came in and said, I've got 20 acres of property, I want to rezon the whole thing to E1 for three acre lots. They're gonna look at it and go, well, what are you gonna do with it?
True.
They're gonna, they're gonna pull them out, they're gonna pull them out, they're gonna make them state what they're gonna do. And either way, if, if the, if the proposal is acceptable, then they can, they'll get the rezoning. They'll still have to do the conditional use for a subdivision. So you'll get the, it's the same thing when you do the sketch plan. Sketch plan will come to y'all for approval and we'll have the, the laid out design of what your proposal. Blanket, blanket, empty rezoning on a piece of property with no defined project, never carter's fee, really doesn't.
So your planning commission is doing its job, that scenario shouldn't happen if they come in and say, you got 40 acres, we wanted to reduce it to 32,000 square foot lot. They're gonna have to, before they grant that, they should be saying, what are you planning on doing? Because they shouldn't allow you to do it without a reason, otherwise you can do it exactly as what you-
Strangely enough, Tim, I've been on the board of supervisors, and some of you have been much longer, I've been on the board of supervisors going on 24 years. Never had an appeal for a subdivision that had an acre or more home size. Never had an appeal that had an acre or more, I've never had an appeal. And I know that there've been several, not many, where people have subdivided properties and built subdivisions on acre or more, some of them four acres, some of them three acres. Never had an appeal and that's why I keep emphasizing, it's the density issue.
And that is literally the reason why we did the, you know, moratorium, but you and I have talked for hours about this. We know our whole goal is to protect the county, when those trees are gone, they're gone forever. So 32,000 square feet, I don't think should even be allowed in, I think we need to find the agricultural zone, identify it as that. Just as you protect a culturally black neighborhood or you protect an old church, I want to protect, let's find the zone and we can all agree. That's what I want to see and Nathan too, and I believe you too.
And that's what, that's where the compatibility issue comes in. Anywhere in the proposal changes that we're possibly proposing, is there a, is a condition in there that, that any zoning change would have to be compatible with the surrounding area? Is it in here or does that change? Because I think the sketch plan that you're talking about might, would have affected the compatibility issue.
In order for the zoning change to, it does have to meet the character of the neighborhood. That's, that's just one of the basic tenets of the reason.
So even with this plan, we're still gonna have the same issues.
I think what Donovan's plans, if I can help, hopefully help, I'm not sure.
Not now, we, not now.
Donovan, I think what, what, correct me if I'm wrong, what is, what he's saying, and I'm not recommending one way or the other because I don't know, is right now you have a A1. So if somebody wants to do something A1 down, they'll have to go down to either E or automatically, the only choice you have is go down to E or to R1. And that creates problems in and of itself because, but if you have, you have categories within A1, then within that A1, it stays A1, which is got the restrictions of A1, but you have movement between that 15 acres.
But if there's no change in the, the conditions of those two different zoning things, it's the, the requirements that you have to meet within A1, A2, A3, it's the same, what's the purpose of it?
Let me, let me ask a question then. Let's say that we go through the, as you have it right now, you have it right now, and help me out here as best you can, and the developer comes in and goes, I want to do R1 zoning, apply, so he applies for R1 zoning and he does a-
From a, from a-
It doesn't matter, A1, A1.
Yeah.
And he would, I want to do R1 zoning.
Alright.
So I have to, because we're changing neighborhood character, and I want to do 7,500 square foot lots. And y'all go, nope, we're gonna turn down both of them. You do not get a change in neighborhood character to R1 and you do not get a, your conditional use, no on both of them, why? Not because the R1's inappropriate, because the 7,500 square foot lots is inappropriate. So he comes back and reapplies, same application, I want to do a R1, but I want to do 10,000 square foot lots. Nope, not gonna do it. So you go, turn that down, comes back a third time, alright, we'll do R1, application has not changed, but I want to do 15,000 square foot lots. And they go, oh, okay, great, we'll give you your R1 zoning now, but we, and we'll give you your 15,000 square foot lots. The, the, what y'all are holding up, up on is density, not the R1, because the application is still for the same zoning district, y'all turned it down twice before. And it's all about lot sizes. With this process, you know, he comes in and goes, I want 7,500 square foot lots. And y'all go, heck no, we're not giving you 7,500 square foot lots. The zoning size that's appropriate is 15,000 and we'll give you that today. It comes through this chase, it answers, and no, no pretty drawings, he didn't have to hire an architect to draw these lots and redraw these lots and redraw these lots and come back here and take three, six months in your time, have the neighbors coming out with pitchforks each time because they're against 7,500 square foot lots. And all they really wanted was 15,000 square foot lots. So this density that you're, you're talking about is what we're talking about. Who cares what the drawings look like? Why make a guy come up here three or four times when you say, we're not giving you 75,000 square, 7,500 square foot lots, we want to do 15,000? That's what it's about, Mr. Leder, it's, it's about density. So you, when, when somebody comes in to a lot that's in the, in the, in the country and they want to rezon it to R1- and they wanna rezon it to R1, you don't need to even consider the conditional use. You just say, we're not giving you an R1 in this area because it's not compatible. Your A, your As should pretty much stay with As, your Es should be transitional between As and Rs, and your Rs should be in areas that is only ripe for growth, where water and sewers available and where there are existing R1 districts or R districts. Right now, you have to go, you have to use your R districts in areas that aren't appropriate. And, and all that does is open up the ground for something, y'all are dealing with one right now that's in court. But he's got Rs all around him, not the same size of Rs he wants to do, but he's got Rs around him. And that gives you the justification for a rezoning.
And that's not a nasty precedent that you were talking about.
Asking for what my neighbor has across the street, which is an R, oh, we're not gonna give you that. They're gonna change the neighborhood character, yes, it has.
Just for the record, we decided that because there was no need.
And we, I have no idea what you're probably talking about.
And there has some compatibility issue.
But it's compatibility.
And as long as there's still the transparency.
Still gives you the compatibility.
Right.
This still shows you compatibility, much more so than coming in three times asking for an R1 zoning when the R1 zoning is what they want, and, and they can show it all around the neighborhood. And you're really, your problem is, you don't have enough diversity in your, in your R districts. This right here provides you much different opportunities to say, this is the area where we require half acre lots. And half acre lots is what we're gonna go with, and we're not gonna give you seventy-five hundred, we're not gonna give you ten thousand, we're going to give you this or nothing. And it definitely, and, and, and your, your citizens will understand that, maybe not the first couple of months, but they'll, they'll get it because every other county that has zoning understands that.
And there's still the transparency, people are still told about it, they still have to go through conditional use, it's just higher perimeters for the maximum or minimum size.
This is more, you have, instead of having five, five ladder, five rungs on the ladder, we'll now have about fifty. Where rather than, you can keep the As where the As should be, I mean, I get it every day, I get, uh, I had Mr. Ladder come in today, he has twenty acres, he has an established easement prior to us adopting an access. He said, I'm giving five acres to this zone, five acres to this zone, five. In this scenario, he has to rezon the whole thing that he want.
And then that sets a precedent.
And that sets a precedent to break up the A, which is not protected.
It's an agricultural use that they're using for. And this gives, and I, you know, you could go back and say, well, we recommend you go to an A, an A5 acre, you know?
What, what, if, if we were to go from, the applicant goes not necessarily breaking up an A to an A, but you got an agricultural, he wants to go to an R. The same crosswalk status would occur.
We get it every day.
That's what we're trying to stop.
Well, we get it every day with, with people, with grandparents and uncles and aunts that wanna give an acre to, to a family member in the area to put a manufactured home.
And the only way to do that now, this is what they're talking about, would be to give it R.
An R2.
And so now you put an R and an A, if you docked this, then you would have an A but with a, with a smaller number on it.
That's right, take all those little Rs out of the As.
You get all the restrictions of As, stay with the property, doesn't change R.
And that's what will protect the county.
I, I think, I think it will protect you a lot more than dropping an R somewhere, you know, north of fifty-three that it may not fit, but everybody can look around and go, look, I've got Rs all around me, how can you tell me I can't have an R? And it's something, and you go, nothing zoning, it's conditional use.
You see, when you say all around, part of the problem too is, is when we did the original zoning, as Eric said, we took small properties and did all that kind of stuff. But you have, you already have some large parcels, people living on relatively large parcels. And over the years before there was zoning, people sold the property and developed parcels, smaller parcels. So you had these smaller parcels out there among and a larger parcel. And when, when the developer comes in and divides up one of those big parcels, his argument is, look, we got some R1s out here. Got this one, and this one, and this one, and that one, but you also got those large ones. Those larger parcels of ten acres and five acres and whatever. Who, who, what, where, where do you, where do you go, where does the board decide which is which? Which is it more accommodating to? You don't sit there and ask to count the parcels and say, if we got ten R3s and twenty, twenty acre lots, who wins?
Well, let me, my, my.
You know what I'm saying is, before, before there was any zoning, people divided up parcels of land, small parcels, big parcels, and you got them up, you got combinations of them in areas. And what's happening is, rather than coming in and increasing the size of the park, you got this constant decrease and, which increases density. I mean, how do, how do we protect ourselves, how do the people, how, how do you deal with that? And that's where the most of the, we dealt with one the other day, we had some small parcels around there, but you have some large parcels.
I think that right now, when you require somebody to rezon that property to R, you are not doing anything but opening up the, the area for higher density.
That's right.
So that, to me, this helps stop that. I also think that you can say, I think there's a clause in your ordinance and most ordinance is to say that a non-performing lot that existed until the adoption of this ordinance can be built upon. Uh, so if somebody's got a non-performing lot of record, meaning a one acre lot that A1's on, let them build on it, don't make them rezon to build on a lot that's been existing for, you know, ten or twenty years. Uh, making some, making somebody rezon to simply build a house does nothing more than create a avenue or inviting densities into areas where they shouldn't really be. Uh, I, if, what, the easiest thing to have is a zoning map that has a bunch of different shades of green that are agricultural in nature and no colors that are supposed to be associated with Rs in that area. Once you start dropping Rs in those areas because somebody wants to put a trailer, or somebody wants to do a small lot, all it does is provide the change in neighborhood character that somebody should point to when they go for a rezoning.
Especially if they go all the way to court, and that's what we're saying.
Yeah, exactly, I, I think that it's very hard to deny somebody a R1 zoning when they're surrounded on three sides by an R1 zoning.
And that's why we're doing this.
And that's why we should be doing this correctly.
Unless there's some need.
So how bad?
Public need's big, I almost got shot down the other night on a public need, that being public need, you've gotta have need.
Just protect the record.
So how, the, with the green and the red that you're stating, with R1 that we've been doing, how, how far are we down the rabbit hole with future issues because we have a bunch of R1 scattered that people are gonna come in here and say, well, you got it here, here, and here? Because obviously we've already made, we've already, we've already started an issue, and it's gonna be ongoing forever. So how bad, how bad, how do you let the issue go?
You can only look forward, you can only change today and try to correct the future.
Yes and no, okay.
Okay.
While, while I don't wanna do any zoning changes right now, I do think once we get these in place, in a year down the line, if we wanna do a comprehensive rezoning or something along those lines, you can begin to look at these R2, or Rs, an R1, an R1 lot that's zoned R1 right now, that may be two acres. And you can say, you know, this really is not an R1 lot, this is a two acre tract, it should probably be zoned an E2. So I believe you can make those modifications because now you'll have those extra, um, areas in your whipper. You know, I don't think, we're not gonna do that right now.
No, I understand.
But I do think that, um, you know, as far as your A1s, your, all your A1s go, we're not going to go in and tell somebody they've got three acre, a three acre lot, they need to now be an A3. But if we decide to rezon in the future, we'll say, this property right here fits an A3 better. I mean, so I think long term, you, you correct your zoning that way, because you've got R1 zonings all over this county.
Well, that's what I mean.
That don't need to be zoning already there. Right.
This, this probably won't make any difference halfway before I'm in the ground. Because if we already have R1s already out there that are established, you just said, they have a fight to take all the way to court because they're surrounded by R1s. But if that's already been done, this is not gonna help until long after all that's correct.
No, no, well.
Because you're not, unless you plan on, plus going out there and changing all these R1s to something that fits into here with someone can't just go to court and say, well, everyone around me is R1, I wanna beat one. Right now, they can do that, it sounds like.
They, they can do that right now.
There's a lot of those scenarios sitting out there right now.
Because those R1s exist, what we're calling those R1s right now is, are R1s established.
Correct.
And, and they exist. Nobody can, after today, after this is adopted, nobody can come in and ask for a R1 again.
That's right.
They've gotta ask for one of these other districts. So there was, if the R1 is there, you can't necessarily use that as much of a precedent to give you an R, you know, 175. I mean, because that's, it's a, it's a different zoning.
But just because you got an R1 run, one surrounding a piece of property doesn't necessarily mean that we have to change, if an applicant on a larger piece of property wants to change it to R1, doesn't necessarily mean we have to just do those R1 properties surrounding, unless there's a need and, and the compat, compatibility of the neighborhood. And that's what I don't wanna eliminate because we are having these issues.
Right.
And I, and I think to be fair to the public out there, that we need to think about the need and also, but more so, the compatibility.
But see, right now, Mr. Ladder, what you, what you have is, if, you, you can look at a R1 and you can say, well, it's not compatible because he's proposing, you know, uh, ten thousand square foot lots, and everybody out here has R1, but it's two, two, two acre lot sizes, so it's not compatible. The zoning is compatible, the lot sizes are not compatible. That's what, and that, and that could mess you up, even though you can say, we just, we said it's not compatible, it is compatible.
But she's, that's true, but she's still leaving out the need and the compatibility. And the change in the neighborhood. You're changing the neighborhood, you're changing the quality of life, you're doing those kinds of things. And I'm, I, I just want to make sure that the public has that protection and, and, and I don't want to short circuit the, the appeal process.
One of the things that this helps, is I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, is right now, you have three, basically, three. And so if somebody's got A1, and they, give the example, and they wanna give some to their child to build a house on next to them, they're forced to try to get R1, to get down to where you can build a house. Whereas if you did this, you could let them go to a smaller acreage, but you would still be agricultural, or E, whichever it is. You don't, and not, you're not going through the, what's happening now is people are forced to try to get an R1.
Eric, if I sit on a, a, a agricultural property, zoned agricultural on twenty acres.
Twenty acres.
Alright, I can build a house on that.
You can build a lot.
I can parcel, I can take five of those acres where the house is and, and make a separate parcel. And somebody else can build a house on what's left, the ten acres.
And you would have to rezon it if you want.
To what? Why would you have to rezon it if, why wouldn't the rest of the land stay agricultural and let somebody else build a house on that?
The minimum size for an A1 lot right now is fifteen acres.
And so you don't have another A that actually allows you to do that. So you have to move down to one of the lower.
Why can't we create an exception?
Why don't you create, why don't you have a smaller lot for an A1 house?
An exception if it's within the family.
It's not allowed in the zoning. A minimum lot size for an A1 lot is fifteen acres.
So if you allow, what he's suggesting here, you're allowed them to keep the A designation, but have a five or a three acre lot.
Correct, it's called an A5, it's still A.
I don't have, I don't have a problem, that's not what I have a problem with.
I understand.
Yeah, no, we, we understand, but what's the solution?
Well, I think, I'm trying to, I think this is, this is, in my opinion, the solution, but I will tell you what is very frustrating. When, uh, a developer is right behind this guy who comes up, who comes, Mr. Ladder wants to, you know, give five acres to his kid, and he goes, can I get a, I, I wanna give five acres to my, my kid, can I have a zoning change? And they give you a zoning change and a, and a, and a conditional use right there on the spot, don't even ask you about, has there been a change in character? Has there been a public need? Very, or if there is some, there's very little information being given because I wanna put a truss on my house, on the lawn, one acre.
It's my child.
And it's my child, and, and y'all give this without any discussion. And then somebody else can get up and give a forty-five minute presentation showing you all kinds of stats on public need for the same request that guy's given, and he, he's turned down. So I mean, you know, this whole thing about you've gotta have public need and change the neighborhood character is, works well when it's a project that you, that you may not want. But if somebody's simply trying to give their kid a, a piece of land, it, it's almost dismissed, and I don't think that's a good idea.
Whereas if you change it and have these A designations, you can do it without any effect on anything else because it's gonna keep its A, or E, and even R, in the, within those categories, the same thing.
And it prohibits that child, if he sells, let's say, his five acres to some developer from Texas, because we have our minimums, it prohibits that developer from putting too much density up in the county.
Well, see, what, what.
Correct. He's gonna come and apply to change that particular zoning.
That's my point. Here's what concerns me about this, let's say.
That's my point, so we have to put a stopgap in for that.
Let's say that the kid comes in and go, and he does a five acre tract and he zones it R1 for some reason. So now you've got R1 zoning.
He sells it.
He sells it, and he wants to come in, and now he wants to come in and get a conditional use for this. He doesn't have, have to ask for a rezoning, and I think y'all would be a little hard pressed not to give a conditional use because he wants to do a subdivision that's basically meets your minimum requirements. You have a harder time denying a conditional use that actually is consistent with your zoning requirements.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, that's why I don't want, I don't want certain zoning out there that, that makes it more difficult.
But that's because right now, your zoning that you have out there can range from a three acre lot size to a six thousand square foot lot size, that's big. I mean, you're talking about things that nobody wants anywhere near them, to something that is almost like a, you know, living inside the city of Gumpford.
Exactly.
I mean, you're looking at, that's all in one zoning order, one zoning district. This, you know, this is going to provide you a lot more diversity, and when somebody asks for a R120, you don't have to say, what size of lot you building, you know, they're building a three thousand square foot lot, so, so the answers are basically in this chart, and not on some pretty drawn one that may or may not get to be constructed.
And so, let me, let me see, if I get one more thing straight, if, if you adopt this now, you're not gonna wholesale apply, rezon the county. But if somebody comes in and they have fifteen acres, A1, they will have the option of going to an A15, A5, or A3 on their own.
Correct.
And that, that, so it would have an effect, based on, and same thing with E, and same thing with the Rs.
Right, I mean, anybody that has to get a rezoning right now, for anything they do, probably still has to come in and get a rezoning.
Right, they have to notice that there was that.
But I mean, but instead of going to something that's somewhat ambiguous, they now will come forward and say, I want an R, you know, 115, or, or, or A15, you know, so you'll, you'll know what they're doing based on the lot size. And then that's probably gonna be the minimum you can go, you can't go below that, so it's that.
I can understand that, but we're still gonna be dealing with these hundred acre lots, a hundred acre parcels of property out there with agricultural where you're gonna have developers coming and wanting to buy that hundred acres, dividing it up into small lots, at least two houses per acre, and we still gonna have to deal with that.
Not if we say agricultural's minimum is three acres, this is an agricultural zone, protected.
He's asking to change the E.
But we're trying to make it harder to become R.
You are not, you are not going to prohibit a rezoning application.
No, sir, you're not gonna prohibit that, that's my point.
Yeah, somebody, yeah, you are.
Well, I'm trying to ask the questions, to understand.
Yeah, listen, you, what I'm saying is, you, you are not going to prohibit a rezoning application.
If you say this is an agricultural zone and three acres is the minimum to protect the beauty and everything else of this area, why can we not put into law, in our law, that is a minimum of three acres in certain agricultural districts to protect them?
That, that is in the district, you know, that, that is in the district, but somebody can come in and go, I want to change that zoning. You cannot, no matter what you do, you cannot prohibit somebody from asking for that change.
You gotta tell them no, or you have to say no.
But yeah, you just tell them no.
You tell them no.
We don't know who's gonna be in office then, I want more rock solid to protect something that won't be gone.
None is telling them no on occasions. Unfortunately, they're not, I'm not the one that's for that.
No, no, I'm just saying, we won't be here forever.
But what I'm telling you, if, if it's two hundred acres out there, it's agricultural zone, some app, somebody can come, the owner can apply to have that changed to an R, R12.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is your map that kinda shows you, um.
It's a hodgepodge. It's a hodgepodge.
I was going to use that exact same word.
Right. It's a hodgepodge.
You've got a little C two here, because somebody wanted to put a trailer up there. You've got a little E one here, because the lot is three acres. You've got, you know, or R one, because it's not quite three acres, so you have to do something else. But the lot sizes are all varied, and, and, you know, you really should be able to come into an entire area and say, look, we're going to make this entire area, you know, an E one three, you know, or, or it works.
I agree, let's say I agree with you, I understand all that. What is the notification process, has that changed?
No.
So any zoning change, or applicant comes in, so the notification to the community does not change.
Does not change. Now, let me look at this chart, right here.
Or any of the appeal, any of the processes as far as appeals, has that changed in there? Other than, other than there can't be an appeal if I want to go from an A one to an A five, or whatever.
I think they can appeal anything.
Anything can be.
I think they can appeal anything. Now, I will tell you, this, right now, your process goes to, you need to split up the application, you have a public hearing before the planning board, and you do a rezoning, and a conditional use at one time. One time, then you, then it comes to you guys, and y'all, y'all hear it, and then if I'm not mistaken, you do a sketch plan. This just goes to planning and engineering. Y'all don't see it. Planning commission doesn't see it. Then it goes to preliminary plan, you're actually dealing with construction details, you know? And then they go build it, and then they come back to you for final plan. So your only shot at it is at conditional use and at rezoning. And if the developer decides to drop a lot here, or to move a retention pond, or do some little minor tweaks of it, which sometimes can be big and sometimes can be little, you guys typically don't see that again. The process that we go, that I'm proposing, is a little more drawn out. You rezon the property, no drawings, no conditional use, you simply rezon the property. Public hearing comes before, you know, planning commission that comes to you guys. Then sketch plan application, same process. You have a public hearing before the planning commission. So there's another shot, it's very similar to conditional use, because now, I've given you the R one twenty, and now they're coming in for a sketch plan, and Eric's going to make sure that every lot in there is going to be at least twenty thousand square feet. Going to have parks, and drainage, and access, and all, it's a little more at, a little more deeper. Now, the sketch plan ought to be a little more detailed than a conditional use, because they already know the lot sizes. They're not coming in here, throwing something together, asking for you to give them, basically, you know, lot sizes on a conditional use. Conditional use is that the developer puts forth, typically right now, is not nearly as detailed as it could be, because it's just a conceptual plan. And that's why I don't think anybody holds them too high, too tight to the sketch plan, because they know the front end is purely conceptual. But sketch plan comes, goes to planning commission, and comes back to you guys again for a, a public hearing. So you've got one more shot at it there. Preliminary plan application, now preliminary plan, it's supposed to be construction details, you know, it's things that, you know, Jackie understands, but, you know, I don't always understand them, you know? But there's a lot more details, and that goes to the planning commission too, and comes back to you guys one more time. So you're making sure this entire process, that drainage is going to be correct, that lot sizes are going to be correct, that access and surrounding infrastructure is all going to be correct. So you get three shots at it, under this cap, this plan, versus here.
But let me ask you, Mr. Grubbs, you're saying that the board of supervisors has a shot at it, and the planning commission, board supervisor, at what point does the public know, oh, I have a shot at it?
They have more, there's more here.
That's what I want to know.
It's right there.
Public hearing notices here, notices that out, and everybody.
That's the zoning.
That's for zoning. Same thing here, same notification process.
For the, for the.
The sketch plan.
For the plan, okay.
So if they were out of town, or if they come in and they go, you know, I mean, like I said, for the most part, density is going to be resolved at rezoning. So when they go to sketch plan, somebody really ought not come in here and say, we don't want twenty thousand square foot lots. That's too late, the zoning's been established, we're going to do twenty thousand square foot lot sizes. So, but they can say, what about traffic? What about drainage? What about all these other issues? That's where your sketch plan conversations are, a little bit more about the details of how this is going to impact our neighborhood, you know, where is ingress, egress, you know, and all that fun stuff. Uh, so I do think that.
If I may, I'm going to give each, if somebody wants to come in for a few minutes, but since y'all are here listening to this, have some opportunity to address the board, so. Bill, if you don't have to leave, if you want to say anything.
Do you want to say something?
Bill, Bill, we're going to give y'all a few minutes to speak to the board after we finish, if you want to wait. I just want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak, if you want to.
I'd be glad to, I'm, you know, would like to have that opportunity.
Yeah, I'll give, you'll have an opportu, can we, I think we've covered.
Yeah.
If fifty-five minutes or so, each one of you, tends to.
I got a little bathroom.
We'll let you talk when you get back. But I just want to, I saw him get up, and I talked to y'all.
I thought he was leaving.
But you want to take just a few minutes?
Oh, my gosh. Um, you know, one thing we, I did want to look at, and this is not, a lot of what we decide, you know, if we're going forward with these zone changes, as the end result, then we start playing around with some of the conservation subdivisions, so that we are putting aside more wetlands and more natural areas, I think that's important. But, you know, um, right now, you can't put a wetland in a lot, which is a good thing, but it also reduces the amount of area that, you know.
That the lot owner has.
Right.
So, so the developer also has, does not mind going through the litigation process, because he's going to gain all this land that's just wasted, and he gets their credit for it.
Just to clarify, the wetlands are still legally accepted in lots, there's nothing prohibiting that right now.
It's just our own ordinance prohibits.
Well, they're not even in ordinance, we've been doing it in practice on the small lots, but like the big subdivisions that we have, where there's twelve and fifteen acre lots, the wetlands are completely included in them, so there's not anything prohibiting it right now.
Okay.
And there's still, legally is nothing prohibiting them on the smaller lots, we've just been trying to encourage it.
Okay.
Not including the lots?
Or not?
They're legally can be included in lots right now, but we've been trying to find ways to encourage them not to be.
Only problem is, when you do that, don't you leave this land out there, never, never land? Who owns it? People don't maintain it.
There's pros and cons on both sides, yeah.
And that's something that, you know, I'm trying to get my arms around, because I know that the county does not want it. Uh, the HOA really does not want it, developer certainly does not want it. Uh, now, I mean, and then I understand more and more that the nature of conservancy does not want it. So everybody wants to save wetlands, but nobody wants to own the wetlands, you know?
Ultimately, I think it would be a common area that the HOA would be responsible for if there is one.
Uh, if there is one, you know?
That's a big problem.
And then if there, if there's amenities, you know, if there's amenities within the HOA, and then they're more likely to, you know, collect fees and all that, so where they can actually pay the taxes on the land.
I can see a lot of problems with future boards of supervisors with this. These guys will come in, and they ask the developer to make a nice little park there, or whatever, they, all those amenities. Then it's the responsibility of the HOA to do it, and they don't do it. And then, Lord help us, ten, fifteen years down the road, and people are complaining about the conditions out there.
And we really need to explore, I mean, you know, the whole thing about parks. I mean, you know, I do think that Rebecca's told me several times that she likes the natural areas that are out there, and I believe if we're going to do natural areas, they should probably be big enough to where they make an impact, and not where it's, you know, a fifty-five hundred, or ten thousand square foot lot, that it looks less like a natural area and more like an overgrown lot. So there's a balance between, you know, what is this? Is this natural, or is this ugly, you know?
Tim, I think we can give them a good example over there, and then it's a point that happens. Lord, if y'all had about an hour or two, we could tell you about it.
So, I mean, I mean, there, you know, there are subdivisions that are going in, where the developers are building clubhouses, and, and nice parks, and they know the HOA is going to be there to take care of it. And then there's some where the county is mandating these parks be put in, and there's not going to be a very healthy HOA in place, and everybody knows going into it what those lots are going to be. So, you know, those are those judgment calls, do you just give the developer the ability to opt out of those common areas, or do you require that they go there, knowing that they're going to be, you know, poorly maintained? Because it's not his fault, I mean, once he gives it to the HOA, if the HOA chooses not to invest and collect fees, that's something he really cannot control.
That's right.
Um, but the conservation these subdivisions will create a bunch more of these common areas that could be good, and as we said, it could be bad. Um, and all this does is allow the lot sizes to get a little bit smaller, but provide a lot more green space. Your overall density would not change. If you're, get a hundred units per hundred acres, you can't increase that, you would just put a hundred units on fifty acres first, and have fifty acres of green space. That's exactly. Um, and this is some of the questions we're just asking, you know, goes back to what to do with these green areas. I know the county does not want them, HOAs typically do want them if they've got structure. If they don't have structure, they're nothing, they're going to be a headache.
Let me just say one thing, remember, if you require parks, what they're going to do is cut down trees, use one, put up a bunch of playground equipment that will rust in ten, twenty years. You and I talked about, about conservation, it's like Kenneth Jones has done a lot beautifully, leaving the natural space, putting little walkways, putting little solar lights, whatever, and then it stays natural. Children can play in that too, and nature will take care of it. We don't have to take care of it fifteen years to tear down the equipment when it's broken.
Right, and those definitely, those work, those work well when you have those natural areas that are, they can't, you know, they can't be developed.
Then houses are built around the natural beauty, instead of the opposite.
Right, right, I agree, and the same thing with like, instead of having a prevention that requires all trees be saved, you know, you say, put these trees in a conservation area, and build around them.
Yes.
And that, that's, but you know, we'll have fewer smaller lots here, but we'll give you this area with a bunch of big live ups or whatever it may be, and that's a good thing. Trying to mandate somebody to build a park and maintain it is very, very difficult. I agree a hundred percent.
There are a lot of places where they're not being made.
Oh, I agree, I agree. Um, this is the standard for rezoning, when I talked about having minimum lot sizes for a district, you can't rezon an area for a half acre lot, you know, they've got, I mean, I've done it before, I've had to go out and get the adjoining property, or join in with me on this application, so I'll have a big enough lot size for a rezoning. And that way, to speak to your point, if you've got to ask your neighbor to sign a document and have his property rezoned with you, chances are, he knows what you're doing, and he's going to be in favor of it. Having these small lot sizes rezoned is very difficult sometimes. Um, I do, this is something that I believe takes up too many time at your planning commission meetings, accessory dwelling units on, in your A zone, on A lots, meaning that if I've got three acres, five acres, or fifteen acres, and I want to put a, you know, an accessory structure on a property for my kids to live in, and you can do one, and it can't be rented, you know, it can't be a manufactured home, but it can be something that you can take it over to elderly parents, or something along those lines, and you don't have to split the property up and get a rezon board.
And I think we've made an effort, just in reference to manufactured homes, that we still approve them, but basically, hopefully, it's for family, but we don't know how long that, that condition remains. You can't police it all.
We've done a few of them.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's, that's it in a nutshell, I mean, if y'all think we're in the right direction, I'll get with Eric, and we'll get to the planning commission, you know, before a public hearing.
Well, the bottom line is, I want, I want to make sure that public has its input, especially in these issues where you have subdivisions and density and all that comes into play, and quality of life. You know, I, nobody wants to have a nice ten acre and subdivision moving two houses per acre. That changes, that changes people's quality of life and everything, and that's protections that I want to make sure that they have.
And what you have proposed with the new process brings it to the planning commission more often, and to the board of supervisors more often, so right there, you're doubling the public input, so that's a good thing.
Right, and you can get a rezoning, and you can get denied a sketch plan.
My point that.
No, no, I hear what you're saying, but would you propose?
It's not only that they come to us, but that the public.
Public hearings.
Hearings, that they know, that they're informed that these are what are being requested.
But aren't those the public hearings?
Yes.
Planning commission and board of supervisors are the public hearings.
That's right, and they're being notified, it's correct.
Right, that will remain.
Same notification.
Same notification.
Even more so in what he's proposing.
That's, that's.
Yes, that's good.
And I mean, with social media and everything out nowadays, if one citizen is watching what's going on, or gets that notice, they oftentimes have the ability to let everybody within miles and miles know.
Most people might be like me, Mr. Grubbs.
I hate Facebook.
I don't know how to turn a computer on, much less you. I'm just kidding. I don't.
I know, I've come to several meetings, but I hope all those people out there are for me, it turns out they are, so. You've got a very active group here in Harris County that doesn't mind letting in their opinions. And they should, and they should, and y'all should listen to that.
Okay.
Hey, Donovan, I'm sorry, our county administrator just brought this to our attention, so we'll just yap about it real quick. We estimated the six months of view of your work, we approved up to twenty-five thousand, and we're at twenty-eight thousand. So how much longer, or how do y'all feel, what's the next? I just want to talk about, you know, your compensation, and how much more time, and how we're going to do this.
Right, the, the way this was, was initially proposed, was like sixty days worth of work, and authorization to keep moving forward. And, um, the ability to get, you know, before the planning commission, and I mean, like, we still really have not, we've got, we've got everything ready to go to them, but it really has not been released to them until we get, you know, kind of a nod from you guys. So the process has definitely been drawn out a little bit further than I expected it to be.
Do you anticipate, so we can act on it, do you anticipate a time and amount? How many hours we're going to do?
Let me, let me.
You want to get back with us?
Yeah, I'll get back with you.
Get back with us.
I hate to be the money guy, but.
Oh, I understand.
Everything has a budget.
I understand, I understand.
Just get back with us.
I certainly will, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan.
Hi, anybody like to comment, maybe come up and give you about five minutes or so? Ms. Middleton?
Oh, Mr. Bill, you want to go first?
Y'all go ahead, I'll follow you.
Okay. Uh, Angel Middleton, one five four four six, John Clark Road, Gulfport. One thing I would like for y'all to think about is maybe looking at how you notify people, and the reason I say that, I think Eric, clarify this, but I think it's three hundred feet. Well, when you're talking about the unincorporated area, three hundred feet is not much notification. My last thing that I'm tied up in court with is.
Well, we do Angel too, there's also a perimeter of.
Fifteen, fifteen households.
So you got. It's three hundred, three hundred foot.
I mean, there has to be some limit, I don't want people to be notified.
And, and at least fifteen adjacent property.
Okay.
So like, my last case, it was the prop, subject property, the county farm uncovered arena, and me, but I didn't get a notification, but in the country, like you said, it's, but I get a lot of complaints about people not being notified because of three hundred feet. So it went out to Highway fifty-three, but it didn't go to the neighbors on John Clark, past the subject property.
They weren't in the perimeter area?
No.
But it wasn't his fault, the computer.
Yeah, she's the way.
I was just asking if y'all would look at it.
Because you got the county farm around, and that thing, yeah.
Yeah, they went out to the, toward the fifty-three end instead of the neighbors.
Yeah.
But I would suggest, maybe looking at some way to increase the notification process, Eric, that would be.
We can, I think the code provides that if the planning commission does not think that's enough, that they can.
I'll need to, maybe let's get there.
Typically, we'll go at least, if we're, if we go to three hundred feet, and we don't get to fifteen, typically, we'll, we'll expand that out until we reach twenty, twenty plus, that kind. Uh, it's just budget, I mean.
Yeah, but maybe just in the rural areas, you know, like in his, in Biloxi and the city, it's different, but in rural areas, that's a good point, could we just expand it in certain areas?
Well, tell me how many people you want with this?
Well, I, I think it's, it's, some common sense, you know, to make sure that certain number of people around that particular property is notified.
Um, I did want to tell you, you talked about the park deal, I know, just in, I serve all the subdivisions in District Two, but where we've mandated parks, they don't have parks, they just, it might be a vague. but where we mandated parks, they, they don't have parks. They just, it might be a vacant lot, it might not. So it kinda gets overlooked in the future, so I just thought I'd throw that in there. And the, what else? Oh, where I can see this being a real benefit, what he's talking about with the A one. Prime example, this happened to me and Mr. Marlin, we have fourteen acres, so it was A, A one split off from a big A one, but my parents and I brought fourteen acres. I needed to put livestock on there, so I had, I needed to put a well, therefore had to get electric run. I had to change that whole zoning. It was no longer allowed to be A one, it had to go to E one to put a well. I wasn't building anything, I wasn't doing anything. This would've been very helpful for our situation, because I could've still kept my A one to put the well for the livestock, so I, I see it being real beneficial. And thank y'all for looking into it.
For sure. Kurt, Dr. Bill, and y'all?
Well, can I sit?
Yeah, you don't have to.
I can't hardly hear you also. Anyway, I appreciate y'all having this discussion, because I've got a real large chunk of ground out there, and I don't have any children that wanna mess with it, and it's been different for me than before in the city. Anyway, I've been trying to figure out what I'm gonna do with it, because I'm getting up there, I'm getting a little long in the tooth. So, I mean, I've looked at donating to Saint Jude, I've looked at giving it to the state, I've looked at a lot of different alternatives, and I hadn't quite made up my mind, I may put it in a conservation easement, which would be where nobody had it. So, I mean, you know, it's five hundred acres, and I've turned down a lot of money, but I don't wanna do that to my neighbors. And I'm, my main concern is the people in the community around me, I've been out there thirty-five years. So, you know, it's not fair for, for somebody to go out there and think they're gonna be living in the country, and they look up, somebody bulldozing the trees down around them and tearing up the ground, and trust me, it doesn't make good sense.
That's quality of life issue that I.
Absolutely. I go out there on the weekend and shut the gate, and I don't come back till Monday morning. But anyway, it's a, it's a issue, just like you said, it's quality of life and comp, you know, and being community minded, I suppose you'd say. And I could've sold my place a hundred times. I've had developers come in there and offer me a ridiculous amount of money, but I'm not gonna sell it to somebody and let them come out there and destroy the neighborhood, and that's what they do. You know, I've got this guy behind me trying to, I didn't buy fifty acres when I had an opportunity, and I, I should have. But anyway, they're trying to put sixty-eight houses on it and put in roads and all that kind of stuff, and you, you know, he's gonna flood me. He's gonna flood downtown Gumpport. I mean, that's the beginning of Turkey Creek. I mean, you know, it's gonna be a mess. And, you know, they want to put a retention fund in. If y'all had any fences in Mississippi, you know they don't stay there by themselves. Trees fall on them, deer run through them, and it takes a constant maintenance problem, because I got fifty miles of them. So y'all need to be aware of what the people who elected you have got problem with all this development, and it's coming gangbusters. So, anyway, I appreciate y'all looking at the problem and talking to it, and potentially helping the community, and be better in the community for everybody to get a equal basis with, with what's going on. Anyway, that's just, I'm just interested in seeing that we keep the rule, quality of life that we've got. So, anyway, I'll turn over this ladder here, so.
Kurt Liden, eighteen, two, two, six, Highway fifty-three, Gumpport. I appreciate the county moving forward to this program, something really been needed, for sure. First question, I, I need to get cleared up a little bit on the As. The As will still be able to be changed to Rs, or under the subclassification of As, it stays an A but goes to a subclassification.
And, and I think Mr. Grug's mentioned that, that any, any zoning can be, applicants can apply to change it from As to Rs to Es. Yes, it'll still be that way, that you can apply to have it changed.
Okay, say, this program moves forward, will the county change any of the zoning prior to this, or it stays as it is?
Stays as it is, I understand.
It would, it stays, the, the way I think Mr. Grug's proposing, what the proposal is, is that all the zoning stays the change, uh, same, but if, as applicants come in, we will change it to these proposals. Possibly like A one, or A two, or A three, yes. Or it can go from an A to an R, or to an E.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong now, I don't wanna be mistaken.
But because they can choose a smaller A, they don't need to go to the Rs.
That's correct. That's what I'm, that's what I'm having a problem with.
Yeah.
If they can choose a lower A, why are they gonna R?
It's gonna be harder for them to go from an A to a R, which you have these subcategories, because if you're in an A and you want to go down to one acre or three acres, or.
Three acres for the.
So if you wanna go to three acres right now, you would have to move down to an E in order just to do a three acre lot. If they change it, you will stay A and be able to do three acres. So, the problem that creates now is, right now, if somebody wants to build a home on three acres with their twenty, they got to go down to an E, and therefore you're creating this district. Now the neighbor over here says, well, I wanna do an E, too.
Creating an E in the middle of an A.
And before you know it, then the E wants to go to an R, and you're creating the problem that we're having now, I think is what the, what the issue is.
And then it gives them more justification for the change.
It should make it harder for somebody to go from an A to an E or an R without substantial justification.
Talking about your Es, we want subclassifications. Probably misunderstood it, but under the E one dash one, E one dash two, you really gotta abide by the E one dash thirty-two on those two, because one acre, you can still only have one dwelling on thirty-two thousand square feet, so you don't have enough more square feet in the acre to have more than one. So, why have E one point one?
But it, I mean, an E one point one is the one acre lot.
Right, but it still falls under the same as a one point three two. You got to have a thirty-two thousand square foot for one dwelling. So, E one and E two is still one house per acre. So you really gotta abide by the E one point three two.
The E one two would be one house per two acres, and E one one would be one house per one acre, because the lots can get that size. It's still one house per lot, and this is saying what size the lots can be.
Okay, so the E, the, the one point two and the two acres is still one house.
One house on a two acre lot.
You could be point by house per acre. One house per two acre lot.
Which in that, in doing that, that lets the board set the density that can be allowed on that, on that larger parcel. That, say you got fifty acres, and they come in and say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna allow you to do an E one three. So an E one three on twenty acres, you can do eighteen lots, three acre lots, and you'll have, you'll have a rent. But it'll be incorporated into something. But that way you're setting the density on front.
Yeah, so, or the E one dash point three is still, you're gonna have a three acre or one house.
One house.
Yeah, all right.
Eric, do we have any limits on the amount of times a property can be zoned?
Now, the ordinance right now, right now states that they, if they get denied, they have to wait six months before they can reapply.
So to Mr. Kurt's point, so if we go from an A one to an E three, that's one zone change, what, what have, what prevents them from eventually breaking that down? So we get to an R one?
Eventually, over time, fifty years in the future, that could definitely happen, and that's how character change happens. But if you get it zoned to an E three, that's what's justified by the character and the public need. It's very hard then to say, six months later, that the character and the public need justify an R one. It's, it's, it gives you those, those gradients that we don't have right now, and an example that we haven't really talked about is Harrington that was developed off of sixty-seven. That ended up being one acre or larger lots off of Highway sixty-seven. If we had this table, that could've been rezoned to E one point one estate lots rather than R one. And so now we have this forty acres parcel that got zoned R one, because it's the only choice we had for these lots. And now that justifies the next forty acres matching R one, where if it was zoned E one, you'd be able to justify estate lots and not R one. So it gives you the gradient to actually make steps between that R one and agricultural land, which is where we're getting caught.
And in effect, what you're saying is, by having those divisions, and I understand that, it's harder for someone to just, E, E, the lowest E that you have is the same as the top E. You can't use that as a justification to get a lower one. It's only the, am I right? You follow what I'm saying?
And where you have a bunch of agricultural land next to what is currently zoned R, which, which Mr. Quavis asked about, is that we've already gone down this rabbit hole, we have R one, but we have agricultural land here. What this allows is a gradient in between, where you can say, yes, you can have residential, but it has to be large, or it can be estate, and it gives you the ability to meet in the middle rather than saying it's all or nothing.
Gotcha.
I mean, no matter how we write this dummy book, we're always gonna have developers that are gonna keep coming in for the R one seventy-five hundred square foot lots, R one ten thousand square foot lots. But with us having more tools at our disposal, we can keep them at the larger lot sizes in an estate portion or an ag portion, and not allow the residential lots to be up in the estate and ag parcels that you want to protect that character.
Yeah, right now, if somebody comes in and goes, I wanna be an R one next to an R one, you don't know if it's gonna be a seven thousand square foot lot or a one acre lot, but it matches precisely, it's R one to R one. Now you can do, if somebody comes in and goes, I wanna do a R, you know, one seventy-five, you can look around and say, there's nothing remotely resembling that in the area. You've got a R one, one twenty, you've got an E one thirty-two, but you don't have an R one seventy-five, so the answer is no. It, it gives you much clearer reasoning to tell somebody no, or to tell somebody yes, if appropriate.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's hard about zoning in an unincorporated area as opposed to a city is that you have so much diversity inside of properties. You have lo, I mean, how many, how, does a city have, for example, Lord only knows how many hundred acres like, or five hundred acres like Bill has sitting out there in the county, all over the county. I doubt it if you have the same number in the city. The cities generally deal with industrial or a business encroachment on residential neighborhood. That's where you get the friction. In Harrison County, you get it in the density stuff, you get the developments in density. That's where the friction comes in.
And one of the things that's happened in the cities is that the commercial zones have, have, over time, been subgraded so that you don't just have commercial, industrial, residential. Now you have, you know, high density commercial.
All different kinds.
And so they graded those to provide the gradient, and that's what this does for residential, is it gives us the ability to put a gradient rather than it's A or B, and that's your only option.
Most of the issues in the county are related to density and subdivisions. Very little, when somebody wants to do a commercial or a property, that can be, but generally, it's not that much of a problem.
In the city, it's business to residential, in the county, it's residential to agricultural.
That's exactly right.
Until you find that, that mix.
That's right. Kurt, I'm sorry to mean to.
No, that's fine.
Go ahead, you've got some more.
Let me ask this question. I, I think the zoning board and supervisory board needs a little bit more ammunition on what is compatible, because these developers just keep inching forward. And I've seen these arguments up here saying, well, it is compatible down the road, a half a mile is the same, or down the road, a mile is the same. It's like there would be a designated distance to be able to compare it to. If not, it just keeps inching out.
And compatibility and all that is somewhat subjective, so it makes it difficult. I don't know if you can really come up with a definition of compatibility, so it's sort of like it's more suggestive, and that's why they often.
It don't seem like a developer can argue that it's compatible to this one down the road, that's a mile down the road. You're getting them to kind of.
And that's, that had been an issue.
Would we have a legal authority to do a distance, like we say, send more letters out?
The ability is just so varied, it's hard to come up with a.
It's subjective.
The court, the courts have developed that. I mean, Lisa Dotson had a case in Gumpport ruled that businesses across Kalamari Road, even though they were directly across five lanes, did not justify changing a residential designation to a business, because the highway divided it, and most of those businesses have been there for fifty years.
It's subjective, that's the hardest part.
So the court said that was not a, a change compatibility, that, that didn't make it compatible with new business change. So it's, it's, that's so hard to design one definition for, because it depends on what you're dealing with. But the courts have restricted it. The board addresses that.
I really think the only big issue in the arguments is in the lower R one categories.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where the, in the county, that's where the biggest fight is.
Yeah, and it just seems like, I mean, I develop, I'm playing both hats. It seems like there's gotta be a distance or something. Anybody can get up and argue, well, it's compatible down the road there, we have this.
We've had that issue, the board has decided those subdivisions nearby were not close enough. Everyone, Michael Jones appealed it, lost on that issue. He was arguing that these other subdivisions that were, and that was Lisa Dotson, too, and she said, this one's a mile away, this one's a half a mile. She went through the whole thing and ruled that was not.
Let me just use one for example, maybe to see what, maybe your suggestion lines are.
Long as it's not a pending court case.
No, not yet. Where I live, the developer wants to develop behind me, he wants a small lot, and he wants to use the compatible, the one that's only half a mile away, but the roads won't really allow it to be compatible at a half a mile. It's, it's really a separate neighborhood, but yet he's still using it in his defense that it's compatible. And somewhere, somehow, there's gotta be a line drawn of what you can use to compare it to.
Yeah, and there, there, you know, there's one on appeal right now, I'm sure that's gonna be the issue. The court's got to decide, the board denied it, they appealed it to a certain court, and one of their three or four subdivisions nearby.
Yeah.
Their R one, of course, the board.
I think it's actually just one.
Huh?
Just one subdivision, actually.
I think there's a couple, or one north, south of the road, and there's one.
There's, there's one south.
I think that, that, that.
There's one south.
We talked about the same one, but I think those lots are a lot bigger.
Yeah, they are, but I mean, still, R one is a bigger lot.
Yeah.
But it's still, still R one, but I don't think that's gonna be a problem, because actually, the basis for denying that, there's not, there was not a need. Most of these subdivisions are empty right now, except for the one that was south of it, and it's got blood problems.
That particular one that you're talking about, you know, they really expressed, there's still a need. And at one time, they were using a mile square area to get the benefit that they needed.
You know, Tim, Kurt, to answer your question, it's sort of, I, I think the answer is more like what the Supreme Court had to deal with pornography? When the justice said, I, I don't know, I don't, you know, you know what, you can't define it, but you know it when you see it. And I think the same thing does with compatibility. I don't know if you can define it, but if you out there in that neighborhood, in my home, and your home, and a lot of other homes, when that sud, that density comes near you, you might not be able to define it, but you sure know it.
It's changing ones that the whole.
When you see it, you know it.
I sympathize with the boards for having to deal with it, plus their head position. If there was something more. If they were something more black and white instead of gray, it would be easier for you guys.
It's, it's just hard.
I don't know what the answer would be, but it, it's.
It's just hard. I, I don't know if you could define a, 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 like, because conditions are different. I don't know if you could really come up with a definitive, subjective distance. I don't know.
I would hate to write that definition because I'm sure there's enough specbusters out there that would pick it to pieces one way or the other.
And there's so many physical things, like, like Tim said, with a five lane highway, or there's a water course, or there's something physically that divides it. But, but the thing is, is making that argument that it's, it's, it's compatible with the neighborhoods around it. The opposite argument is, it's gotta also be compatible with the other ones that are so different. And having gradients in between lets you find that compromise that works that is more compatible on both sides rather than only having R one to choose from.
And the compatibility issue, I know we had one dealing with relatively large lots surrounded by a bunch of others. Those small lots were created long before zoning was implemented. You see? So.
The only thing I know for certain is not compatible in this near area.
And no matter what you, what you gonna, what's gonna happen, it doesn't matter what you do, you're gonna get sued.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna be feeling, the developers aren't gonna be happy, and the citizens aren't gonna be happy. Nobody, I mean, it's a.
Well.
I always say where a lawyer's gonna get shot is in a divorce or a zoning matter.
Bottom line is, people have, have their homes, they've invested in a specific type of atmosphere, rule, semi-rule, and then all of a sudden, boom, somebody's proposing to come in with these high density stuffs, which will change the, the neighborhood totally. And that's, that's where the problems come in, and I, I, I think we.
Mark, you know, I'm kind of a simple black and white guy. But it looks like to me, couldn't you just set a minimum lot size, like an acre? Keep from stacking those things in there one right after the other? I mean, you know, that would be easy to define.
I, I guess you could, Bill. I don't know how long, I, I don't know if the.
Well, you, you do that with your, with your zoning designations.
We're doing that with the designations, yeah.
Well, you gotta place a block where they can't just pile them in there. You know, some of these folks have got a house on two acres.
That's what we wouldn't approve the other day and, and.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm all for development if it needs to be done smartly, you know.
That's right.
There might be a place for a high density homes. Who knows, you know?
That's why I was asking Donovan from day one, can we designate certain respective agricultural areas to be protected that do have a high minimum size?
I, I mean, you, you can draw a line that says, we're not gonna do anything, you know, A one, anything other than A outside of this area.
That's what I would.
But, but does that mean that everything inside of that area is open for Rs and Ds?
No.
I mean, when you draw that hard line, you're drawing a hard line.
Well, well, isn't that what we tried to do with the, uh, uh, restricted growth, G one?
Can you, uh, come up?
Oh, I didn't wanna interrupt, but.
Well, as long as y'all can speak.
Jason, Jason Smith, fourteen oh fifty-four Guff Haven Road. Isn't that kind of what we tried to do with the G one restricted growth?
I'm gonna say yes. Uh, I'm not, I've, I've looked at your comp, your comp plan a good bit, but there's also G twos and G threes that, that this board has said, we don't want, the neighbors have said, we don't want growth to occur here. So, you know, you can't live by the future land use map on one side and say, look, it says you can't do anything outside of here because then you're gonna, I can do anything I want inside of there? You know, you can't. So, but that's where zoning comes in at. You can set those boundaries. But once you set those boundaries, if they're gonna be hard and rigid, you know, you gotta go with, with it both ways. I, I mean, I can draw a line. I mean, the GRPC, uh, Gulf Regional.
Landing Commission?
Has a, a boundary they call the urban growth boundary. And to me, that's a pretty good line. Uh, and it, but that line, you know, was, runs around Highway fifty-three. And everything north of Highway fifty-three and something about is, uh, outside of the urban growth boundary. But everything south of it would be inside of it, meaning you could go high density. But I know that, that you guys don't necessarily wanna do, do that. And there are some areas north of fifty-three or, or to the, to the west that y'all have allowed R one to go into, and, and should be. I mean, if you've got a, a node from an interstate interchange, then that should be probably an R one district. So, I mean, these lines are very arbitrary and they change. Uh, so I, 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 I don't know that drawing one in the same, the same, this is, nothing's gonna occur north or south of this is great, but I believe if you wanted to start with one, that's one that's pretty well established. And it's based on availability of utilities, it's based on the, the, the road constructions. I mean, it's based on things like that. And it's gonna aggravate some people because they can't get it, but it's also one to say that, um, if somebody asks for an R one inside of that, you should give it to them.
It's harder, it's harder to deny if you, if you're in that zone that generally, yeah.
Right. I mean, I, I, I believe that with these districts that you're doing, and by having the availability not to allow Rs in the areas where they should not be, it's going to shut down the argument a lot earlier, uh, in that process. You know, how can you, what, how do you wanna change this to a, a red district when nothing around you is anything but green? It, it, it's easier to say that does not make, uh, you know, good sense. But right now, uh, I've got an R across the street, I've got an R to the south of me, I wanna be R, you know? You, you don't have grades, as Jackie said, it's, it's all one way or the other.
The county, to some extent, cut its nose off despite its face when we put in a lot of water and sewer in those rural areas. So you look at, you can look at it good and bad. Because the fact that you have water and sewer and rural areas available to large landowners, you know, uh, it's hard to, that's what the developers argue with. You got water and sewer, so we need, we can put in smaller lots. And to be honest with you, the application for that CDBG grant was primarily to have people move in those areas. So we cut our nose off despite our face to, to some extent, is, is what I'm saying. So, but I would argue that we didn't do it for developers to make money. We did it to clean up the environment. So there's a counterargument to it as, as well, so. But, uh, the fact that we have water and sewer in some of these areas is what's creating this demand for these smaller high density areas.
Is there any way to get some more black and white rules on, on the needs in that area? I mean, is that just a personal opinion?
Yeah.
It's, it was, it's a personal opinion, but it's, it's more, it's a board's opinion. You know, if you can convince them that a, uh, that water and sewer and, and to get people off the tow line and to get them out of harm's way and to, uh, reduce insurance rates are all public need, then that's a public need. But if you say the preservation of rural areas and agricultural lands is a public need and that we're not going to, uh, uh, allow this area to be, you know, uh.
Our, our water and sewer was to clean up the environment, to make sure that the.
Yes.
creeks and rivers and the gulf, or the sound out here is not polluted.
So what you just said, the second part of that, write that down. That's exactly what we want. And I hate to even say the T word, but I could talk five hours about trees.
Yeah.
We went out there and saw River Place, I believe it's called. I literally felt like I was in a Lorax movie. It was disgusting to see every single tree gone. Everyone's gonna flood. The sun, the rays, the dry dirt, it's horrible. That's the whole point of the moratorium, why we push for this so much. River Place, right, the one.
River Hills.
River Hills, I'm sorry. There are new hills.
No, River Place is one of the luxuries that almost looks the same, but it's.
Okay, River Hills, but you know I'm talking about, it was, it's, it's horrendous. And there's still nine more phases coming to that. If we can inverse this pyramid and say, you cannot cut down X amount of trees on X amount of land, then the developers won't be salivating so much over our county.
The other side to that, though, goes into agricultural as well because the, fundamentally, as soon as you take a forested area and cut trees to put cows on it, you double the runoff. And so are you gonna tell agricultural people they can't cut down trees as well?
Well, you see, and look, you know, I know what you're gonna say, because we, and, and you're right, because you heard individuals, you know, his right to walk out with a chainsaw and cut down a tree. There are ways to put it in writing where that doesn't happen. And also agricultural, if you're gonna have ten livestock or more, then yes.
I would think that you could kind of control what she's, what Rebecca's talking about in reference to subdivision regulations.
You can't.
You would, you would hope.
But we don't have one now.
But a lot of times, what you'll end up with is the property owner will clear the property a lot of times before they come in.
Before the, yeah, in preparation.
That's the point.
Knowing that that's what they want. That's right.
Lexi has an arborist.
They do.
I mean, perhaps you're an arborist. We, the county does not have someone to protect the trees. No, I know what you're gonna say.
The policy regulations.
But the point is, if you, if you put it in subdivision regulations specifically to address something like River Hills, and Mr. Bill decides he's gonna sell his five hundred acres before he puts it on the market, he clear cuts it so that the subdivision developer can build it without having to deal with that. I mean, they know that trick.
Put in the coordinate.
That particular development you're talking about, I've lived in that community all my life, and I have personally seen that phase one flooded.
Oh, yeah, I saw a guy literally coming up in a canoe. He said they've done it for thirty years. So the fact this is gonna, every tree seems to.
Remember this, right in front of the access to that development, old Highway forty-nine, between the mid-sixties and mid-seventies, it was totally shut down. It was dirt. They don't, just abandoned it. And then it was brought back in about nineteen eighty. And that's the reason it was abandoned. It flooded. And they didn't raise the elevation of the road or anything around there. There's nothing changed. So, you know, that, I don't know where that failed to happen at, you know, but the flood zone there, I think is misconstrued.
But to get to your question, Kurt, I think it was a good question. It comes to need, especially in Southern building houses and stuff like that. I don't know if you did the research, and I'm sure it's out there, but it, it obvious that we could check and see how many houses are available, how many stock homes are available, and what their needs are. Are we building too many?
Well, this particular one must be in pill. He said the need was there, and that's one of his biggest points. The need is there. So I took a half a day and went to square mile he kept wanting to use in his advantage. And there's over thirteen hundred lots ready for homes right now, already approved.
Already approved.
But yet he still defines a need. So, you know, the board's sitting here saying, well, we don't see a need. It's thirteen, plus thirteen hundred sites ready for houses now. Seems like there ought to be some rule to get it, to keep from being an uphill process. I mean, thirteen hundred available house sites, there's no need, but, but in their eyes, it's a need.
Well, I think that would be important, Kurt. I, I don't know if that information now can, if it's not in the record, could it, could it be placed before the judge?
Feel now?
Yeah.
I think that would, there's.
No, I'm talking about.
You made that very clear.
That, was that information?
Yeah, it was supposed to be in.
Yeah, that's in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's in.
I'm not gonna deny that, but there was.
I think that argument can be countered and, and this, uh, this.
River Hills was used for that purpose, saying that there was lots to be developed there that didn't need another subdivision.
And that thirteen hundred plus was without counting theirs up there, wanting.
Yeah.
In, in a square mile. In, in a rural county area.
One thing that I wanted to add to that point is that in my notes, in, in twenty-two, where we come before the zoning commission, I went to the zoning commission and asked, how many rooftops are approved right now in Harrison County? They could not tell me. And they told, I said, how many are under construction? They could not tell me that. They said, go to the, uh,
Building Code.
Building Code. I went to the Building Code. They could not tell me how many homes were under construction. And so that was one of the things that I would like to just put out there for a thought that y'all might consider.
They could look at their records.
They could tell you, but it'd have to be a lot of.
They had to do some research, but they.
In today's time, I'm just making a suggestion.
That's a great suggestion.
That should be, we should be able to provide that when someone like Mr. Ladner brings that up in a meeting.
Absolutely. Our IT department can do that in ten minutes.
So it would have to come from the code.
I know, but he can help figure out, give them a.
It is a department, no, no, a permission.
And they should be able to tell you.
Yeah. Peter can generate.
I wanna, actually, I can, because I've dealt with the Jackson County, and I can tell you, I've got a chart that shows you every year how many homes they build. And it was in two hundred, you know, back in two thousand and ten, and it climbed up to over six hundred and fifty over the past two or three years. It climbed to four fifty the past few years. But I mean, that, I, I keep up with that number because it's available. Uh, Harrison County does not have that, and I look at that.
We need to make sure that.
That ought to be something that y'all try.
They should be, they should be able to pull it out.
They should be.
Out of their programming software.
How many open permits?
Who's gonna take it? I think, who's gonna take that and run with it, make sure?
I just asked Robbie to write it on his list.
Thank you. I just need to know who's gonna fix it.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll chase it down.
All right, thank you.
And then get with IT, because they can go, there you go, and then they can insert, and you press one button, you have your password, and it's all right there.
I hope.
Yeah. May I ask this, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
You retired in the school system? When I was trying to get this development appealed, I approached school board members. And I said, I'm not asking y'all if you can handle the kids or not. I'm just asking, for the sake of this square mile area, how many seats are available in the schools in that area? And the only answer that they will give is, you send them, we'll teach them. How can you teach them if there's no seats available? We bust them. Seems like it could be answered, I mean, the school board should have some sort of, of, of projection plan for future. So I think it's about a part of getting a development approval is, can the schools have it? I understand the school board saying, you send them, we'll teach them.
Yeah, you know.
It, you know, that's not reality. And I feel like they ought to be able to, to use that.
The school is very reluctant, uh, the school board is very reluctant to say, yeah, I don't know if we can handle those kids.
We want that federal money. I mean, I mean, let's be honest.
You know, you ought to be able to request the board to say, well, what is your objection of what you have? How many seats do you have available in this particular development that's in the three schools? They ought to be able to say how many seats are available in three schools.
I don't think they can say that. They have to say that.
I don't, yeah, that's, that's a public school and whatever.
Whatever your policy.
They have to educate.
But it's, it's, as, as a citizen and a board, we're responsible for making sure there's a place for them kids to go.
And they'll tell you, they, they, they can prepare. I mean, you can look at Harrison, Harrison County schools, the schools they've built. But, no, I, I know what you're saying, but they're not gonna tell you that they, you know, as a public board, they, they obligated to educate, and so there, they got to do it.
But, well, that puts them in a spot when we as a community and use the board, throws this development in here, and then where are they at? They asking for money to build another school. That's gonna take two or three years to make houses.
That's right.
Yeah.
Where the house is gonna happen in less than a year.
That's right.
They gotta teach them, even if they're here illegally.
That's right.
But I've been that kind of where.
I'd like to speak for a second. First of all, against developers, and then maybe a little bit for developers.
Big thing, Kurt.
Against the developer, I feel like the need, there's a need for some things in place to protect you guys, protect the taxpayer, to making sure basically the roads and drainage is in place before they can start building. And I don't see a.
Well, thank you very much.
A process in place that the developer gets around the expense or sharing the expense of that. They approved or disproved, and when they approved, they go to development. But yes, infrastructure's not there. Now, again, I'm just using this one as, as an example, this one development. They sit here and say, we got water, we got sewer, you know, it's all there, and we're gonna add a two hundred foot turning lane on Mark West Road to, to help the, the traffic. Well, the two hundred foot turning lane is no good when you got a one lane road. And in this case, which just using an example, should be something in place to make that developer land on, go ahead and submit enough land, develop that road up to speed. And at the minimum, and then above minimum, participate in developing that road. I don't think the taxpayer should be burdened to do it. Now, on the developer's hand, you know, we say, yeah, I mean, you know, but we gonna put in asphalt streets, we gonna put in curving gutter, we're gonna put in sewer and water, we're gonna put in electrical, we're gonna put in streetlights, and we giving it to y'all. I mean, that's a biggie. But at the same time, it shouldn't be that all the taxpayers and the burden of the people around there to build that street for that development.
Accommodating the roads to it.
Right, and the property taxes don't even come close to even paying for half the roads, let alone all the other services we do.
So it, you know, it, it seems that it would help you guys on some of these approvals or disapprovals if you had means to put in place that, well, we have to get the infrastructure correct before you can get approved.
Excuse me, Donovan, we had this conversation about Mark West. Remember that the per, periphery roads weren't even twenty feet wide? Is there a, an arm or some teeth that we could put in that would say the roads must be able to accommodate X numbers?
So right now, what we have is the zoning and conditional use. And so that happens at the planning board level. And you can put conditions there, but nothing has been developed, planned wise to the point to know those kinds of conditions that need to be applied. And so what we're hoping to see is that if we change this to where we have zoning, followed by sketch plat, followed by preliminary plat, at the sketch plat level, that's where you have a, a planning commission and a board hearing to address things like access, the main roads, the main drainage concerns, those kinds of things, where a board can say, use this one for example, okay, we'll move forward with the sketch plat, but your main access on this road is not sufficient. If you want to build this, you're gonna have to approve that road too.
And the experts who would tell us that information are the two of you, because we don't know that information.
Right, and right now, at a conditional use point, all you're talking about is can we put a subdivision on this land?
Gotcha.
I'm not even involved in that process.
Okay.
It's just planning. So we don't have those extra steps to be able to address those, and that's one of the things in talking with Donovan, we're hoping to incorporate at each of those phases moving forward. And then when you get to the preliminary plat level, we've had a couple subdivisions where they're developing drainage correctly, but there's tweaks to it that you'd never catch early on. But when they get their final plans together, you realize they're, they're concentrating flow in a place that it'll hurt, and they need to spread the flow out.
Gotcha.
Things like that then get caught at the preliminary plat level, and you're getting my recommendation whether you should move forward or change things. So hopefully, with these extra hearings, we're getting the opportunity to see things like that.
Basically, what she, what they, basically, what they're saying is, the developer, i- i- is not gonna spend a lot of money making plans and all that kind of stuff without some assurance that he's gonna have the right to build it.
Yeah.
That, that's what their argument is. Don't, don't, I don't wanna commit, uh, uh, or, or do engineering and all the other preliminary stuff, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever it is, and then come before the commission, the commission says, no, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
So I think what y'all saying is, you can give, get more information uh, from them if there's some assurances that they can.
You, you give them, you give them this step, and they'll invest to the next. You get to check them again, they'll invest to the next.
Some preliminary approvals on infrastructure that goes along with the approval of the development.
And I want everyone to know that from day one, Donovan and Jackie and Eric have been on the same team on this, so our two vital experts have been dealing with this. So y'all could make that a priority as well.
Oh, absolutely. That, one of the, one of the positive sides of the change of this will be that, that the board will get to vote on something that has the weapon of delineation and the engineering behind it, not just a concept. And you'll, you've already looked, you will have already looked at, at traffic. You, density was dealt with on the front end, because that's what the developer is concerned, the des, the density. How many lots can he sell?
Right.
But the developer will have, will know at that point that they're, they're approved to move.
But that's, but that's when we get to the point of doing a turn lane, and doing two discharge points from a detention pond. That has another public access, like another public hearing level, where I'm not just held to, the, the rules say this, you met the rules, you can build. It gives another public hearing level where the neighbors can say, okay, you might be meeting a minimum, but you're gonna hurt me this way. Can we tweak it? And I, I mean, I've seen that work in many other municipalities and counties where you get that next shot to really tweak something. Fundamentally, I mean, yes, developers wanna make money, but they don't wanna hurt a neighbor doing it. They wanna do it nicely if they can, but their goal is to make money. And so if you get to that point where you say, can we tweak something?
If the real, if the primary concern is what you're discussing, drainage and flooding and all that, we can deal with that.
And it gives us a good shot to do it.
But right now, the only people dealing with it is these two guys, because y'all are doing conceptual plan, you know, at, at conditional use. So you're looking at the big picture at conditional use, and you're not getting down to the real meat of it. It never comes, the meat never comes back to you.
You missed Jack.
So now, when, when they come in and they begin to look at the sketch plat, they're going to get more into access, more to public utilities, more, all these questions that are not even thought about being asked now at zoning and conditional use, because you're talking about zoning and dis. Right. They need to be separated and argued independently, and I think that's what this will do.
There was a format that went along with the process of approval of development, and that format meaning, uh, at the same timeframe, this infrastructure has to be done. You can't say, well, it's there, this, this particular development. They stood here and said that sewer was in place, water was in place, and that's not true. They have a sewer running in front of their land, but it was put in for a barbecue restaurant down the road, and it is not capable of handling over a hundred houses. So the owner is of that utility, he's financially capable, physically capable of upgrading that. But if you're talking about it at least a year to upgrade it.
That's a private certificate, huh?
Yeah.
That's where the Public Service Commission has to get involved.
Yeah.
Well, there is a way to charge, I mean, I don't know if anybody does right now, but you can charge impact fees for like the developer, where they're gonna put some strain on the infrastructure, like a, a road.
Right.
I just don't know how you would determine how much they have to pay.
When somebody's standing here and telling you it's available, y'all have no source of knowing if that's correct or not.
Exactly.
Well, we have, the, the provider is supposed to have a certificate, what's it called?
Certified district.
No, no, uh.
A will serve.
Will serve letter. Before any of those are approved, they are supposed to put, uh, submit a will serve letter.
But the, the public, the Public Service Commissioner told me, they have, if they own the certificated area, they have to give you a will serve. Now, will they, will they put that? But that will serve is a little bit deceiving, because the Public Service Commissioner.
Well, it's incumbent upon the Public Service Commission to, they have regulatory authority, and they should be able to regulate that. And if somebody gives a, a will serve letter, they should be able to provide those services.
Yeah, they can provide it, but will they, who they want to invest?
And if they don't, then the Public Service Commission needs to get involved. Tim, you know, that's very responsible.
There's a timeframe. There's a timeframe that's the issue. You know, most of the certified districts, they capable of upgrading. But it's the timeframe. Everything's out of the growing pains. Growing pains out of sequence.
And that costs them, and they're reluctant to invest in.
They'll charge the developer, if you, matter of fact, what was the, I had one over in your district where they wanted ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, as a developer, it's common to have what we call chase your sewer and water down the road to get it. But like in this particular case, you're gonna have to chase it about three miles.
Yeah.
You know, it, then it becomes discertificated.
Impressive, or cost.
Owner's problem. But somehow or another, this board, Eric's board is getting misled because they're able to sit there and say, it's there, it's available. It may be for fifty houses, but not five hundred houses. And there's no way for these guys to know that. And I don't know how you stop it. I think more of it is getting, Miss Jackie and her team more involved in the process for them to be able to define. You know, let's do a survey and see if the infrastructure can.
And it depends on the, the certificate holder or his, my manager.
Well, and then ultimately, if we get to the point where we're doing a sketch plat, and we, we uncover the fact that some service is not available, roads, sewer, water, something, they still have their zoning. They haven't been denied their zoning. But you don't approve a sketch plat because you haven't proved a satisfactory way to get a sewer to the property. So they can go solve that problem and come back and get their sketch plat approved.
I understand that. That's good that, that, you know, you can get more detailed information before we move on.
It's more, it's more than minor applying a timeframe than a yes or no. It's making sure it's all in the same timeframe, if available.
And all those things can be put on the record in each one of those sets.
There's ways to raise money if you, if the board, it's not gonna be pleasant, that you can charge an impact fee on every building permit in the county.
Yeah.
It puts it to a kitty that pays the.
I, I, Tim, I don't think any of us would object to make sure that the public is protected and it's done right. If, if, those are the guys that's making the money.
Yeah, you can do an impact fee on the developer, you can do an impact fee on every house that's built. I don't know how much that money that would generate.
What about mine?
Have they, made those legal?
I just was reading an article about it, so I hadn't.
Well, I, I do, I, I, I think they're called capacity fees.
I gotta get going.
Well, I'm. I, I miss.
Is that good?
I, I.
My capacity's are good.
Another example. I, I'd like to see something happen with these retention ponds. As a developer, we abide by the rules and put them in. And then we turn them over to the HOAs, which, that's the end of it. Now they out there in nobody's land, because a, a homeowner that works at Walmart.
He's not gonna bet.
And you come up and tell him, you know, hey, I need a hundred dollars for your part of.
He gonna have a little problem with that. That's what Mr. Bill described, uh, about maintaining, you know, it's.
In this particular case.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest, and he probably gonna have a long list to know from this, but I would suggest that the county or counties combined, it may be one of these county conventions, the DQ created these things. They ought to make a means, a way of, of, of tax money to maintain them. It, it shouldn't be the burden of, of the board supervisors to.
But we don't, we don't maintain.
And now, right now, they're not being maintained.
Yeah, there's tons of that.
I've been.
And everything else, we got all kinds of issues.
But they say that there can be some sort of format again on how these things are gonna maintain. You know, it, it shouldn't be just left out there to HOA, they're just not gonna do it.
That's the problem.
Now, I'm gonna say this, and I'll say one other thing on the developer side. And I'm gonna use an example. And I know this is a law process to make this happen, but for developers, developers to, to have incentive to help redo a road, that's, you know, he, he needs some incentive to help it to cross the numbers to make his development come out of profit. And I think that could be done by taxes, and the easiest way for me to apply that is when I went through. I developed one in the city of Gulfport. I had a few people come to me wanting to build, wanting a higher, upper scale subdivision, kinda like a gated community. I said, I can do that, but it's gonna take me a lot longer selling those lots, because you sell those one at a time, you don't sell them as a group. So I asked one of the zoning board members, would you get with your board? And I'm willing to make this happen to make a better community there, and there's a need for it. I don't have enough people calling, asking me about it. But I can't afford to pay the taxes after I get it plotted as lots. It would break me holding it till I sold them all. So I said, if you guys would let me continue paying the tax base that I've got in place before development, and as the lots are sold, let the tax transfer over to the new lot owner at the higher rate. But the part that I've got still holding on to, now it, it's under the tax plan, and I'm twenty, thirty times more taxed than I was used to, and can't afford to hold on to it. And I said, if you guys would make that one incentive, let me continue paying the tax that I've been paying, until the lot's sold, then you convert it, I'll do this. And they said, they're not interested. That's legal, or it's nothing to do with us. But that's a great incentive, even like getting a developer to participate in building a road. You know, because like that particular same subdivision, sold half of it, had to wait a year to sell another half. I was paying eleven hundred dollars.
Paul could help you out with that.
Yeah. I was paying eleven hundred dollars a year for tax for the entire piece prior to development. Once I got it filed as lots, the lots went up to nine hundred each. So to put that in money, it went from eleven hundred a year to about eighty thousand a year.
I think we could look at that, uh, if we have the legal authority to do it. That's the question, whether we have legal authority to evade taxes or, or something of that nature. We would have to have statutory authority to do it.
But it goes back to throwing a bone to the developer that'd be able to help on some of these things if he had an incentive to.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go on this one thing, which I know ain't got nothing to do with you, but I don't think a lot of people are aware. We have to pay for sewer and water as a developer, storm drain, all of that, streets, curving gutter, and give them to the municipality, and that's fine. Taxpayers getting something out of it, and the county, cities getting the tax revenue and the monthly utility fee out of it. So, fine, it works out. But we have to pay for all the power for these developments. One hundred percent. And not only one hundred percent of the power, Public Service Commission in years past has allowed them to have sixteen percent tax that has nothing to do with municipality tax, it's the power company tax. And what that's for is, they deem that underground power, the lifespan's thirty years on it. They take that sixteen percent tax on what they charging you to put power into this development. Sixteen percent of that goes into investment. At the end of thirty years, they have enough to replace it after thirty years. Now, they, they get the monthly fees off every house, but the developer is having to pay them a hundred percent to put power in.
So we should charge sixteen percent for you to put everything in on the front end so we can.
I appreciate it, but I think we run out of time.
That's another incentive that the developer gonna have to, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the power company is a contractor just like I am. But he's getting his paid for.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's expensive. I mean, I'm talking, I'm talking a eighty lot subdivision costs me over seventy thousand dollars just to put the electricity in. Not counting, I got to pay the, the light bill on all the street lights for a year.
And getting there right.
I mean, what fair is that?
Thank you, Kurt. I, I thank you. No further business, but y'all have y'all's walking orders, uh, walking papers, something, what to do. And get what the zoning costs. Uh, what you think we need to do. All right.
We'll make a motion to do adjournment.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say bye-bye. Bye-bye, no more scares. Thank y'all.